I will call the meeting to order. Okay. Thanks Ben. All right, I'll mention a few meeting logistics. If you're joining remotely, please change your name displayed to your first and last name so we know who we're talking to. Similarly, if anyone who speaks to address the council, we'd ask you to state your name and where you live. We recommend that you keep your comments to under three minutes. And if you're speaking about a specific agenda item, we would like you to keep your comments germane to the topic at hand. If you wish to speak, you must be called on by the mayor. Once you're called on by the mayor, you may make a statement or ask questions, but if you have multiple comments or questions, please ask them all consecutively. As we generally do not allow back and forth comments or questions because that would have the effect of involving the council in a in a discussion that may not have been warned. And if you speak out of turn, discuss non-german topics, go on too long, etc. You may be interrupted and reminded of the need to adjust your comments. Next, we have to approve the agenda. Is there any question about any agenda item? We're ready to go forward as is. Okay. Oh, is there a comment?
Yeah, can we add that item, their short item about October 18th, public for date?
Very good. We can take that up under other business. Thank you. I saw, I saw that email. That's good.
And there are other emails too, so.
Okay.
I might well mention that I'm going to pull with minutes off the consent agenda for actually two reasons. One is actually meaningful to this group. One is a typo that it's not just a typo because it has substantive meaning that we left off in Digi. So I want to fix that rather than just add it as fixing a typo. But also there is a question about a motion that created a subcommittee. There was a lot of cross talk and discussion, which I interpreted as discussion and another listener interpreted as actually part of the change of the motion. So we may need, I'm going to listen to it again. And what's going to happen is I'm going to have to either decide I was correct or decide I'm not. Either way, it could come before you all. And you'll have to prove it and take a side. So I think in the future, we just need to be a little more precise on what some of these motions are. So this kind of thing won't come up again. So.
Great. Is there, if it has to come before the council as a, for a vote, is there a way to isolate and attach just that audio clip to the council packet? Oh. So that we can all hear it and try to decide for ourselves what we think happened?
I could, I could try it. I don't know if that would work with our system.
Just a thought.
I can give you the timestamp as to when it is.
That'd work too.
And obviously, if you all decide that my interpretation is wrong, you just vote to edit the minutes when they're presented.
Yep.
But, um, because I may end up deciding the same way, but we'll see. I'm open to, I'm open to the idea that I screwed it up.
Okay, thanks. Next, we have general business and appearances. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the council on any topic that is not on tonight's agenda. As always, we ask you to state your name and where you live and limit your comments to five minutes. Is there anyone in the room who'd like to be heard? Yes, sir, in the back.
Jim Sheridan, I used to call on you 35 years ago in the printing industry and your father. So anyways, Maurice Martino, Sixth Scrivener Street. Lived here 30 years. Passed elk member, have hunted with crossbow on the elk's property for years.
So I'll interrupt you to just say, we do have a topic on the agenda tonight about hunting on country.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Oh, that's okay.
Then let that pass and let me use the other minute and a half to say, looking for if we have any Airbnb rules from Montpelier. And what makes me say that is because the house below me, who is owned by a woman out of San Francisco, and she has an Airbnb in Detroit. And Ed Flanagan, who's across the street in W N C S. Uh, we had troubles with bears in the area. And you know, when someone's in an Airbnb and not accustomed to worrying about bears, I mean, they were piling the trash out there. So we had really no way to communicate with her except for through Airbnb. And boy, was she irate. Uh, so you know, Ed just said, you know, I'm just telling you what happened to me. And I don't know, is there a, do they have a place where they have to communicate and how would communicate with them? So that we don't disrupt their business and be a good neighbor. But at the same time, I mean, I put my trash in a shed and the bear even clawed at the door. And so, I mean, there's not much we can do. And you know, you call the game warden and he's, he tells me about what not to do for bear. And yeah, I know I did that. But anyways, I'm just looking for if there's any guidance on Airbnbs in Montpelier.
We did adopt a registration requirement a year or two ago. And I'm not sure what the current status of that is, but so we'll look into that.
Right. Just so that we, even if we could call and have a number where we could call them instead of doing it out on the web and an ineffective business.
Yep. Thank you. That's a good point. Anybody else in the room? Giovanna.
I'm Giovanna Peebles. I live on Woodcrest Drive in the suburbs of Montpelier. I'm a District Two person. I'm going to start by thanking all of you because I know your job is thankless. And I know you do not get thanked enough. I know. I can't imagine how hard you work. I know what a difficult, difficult jobs you all have. So I'm going to start with thanking you for your work. Um, this morning I sent a two-page email to all the city council members and to John, our reporter, and to Kelly. Um, specifically very concerned with the language of a motion that was passed by the council and is in the minutes of September 24th that John was specifically speaking about a few minutes ago. And I was in public service for 40 years. And motions, and I continue to be on nonprofits. And motions are really important. Preciseness of motion language is very important. Especially on big ticket items, especially on items, there is contention in the community. And potential, and contention among the council members. So I encourage you to have very precise language with motions. And to the extent possible, written ahead of time. So if the council knows that you want to approve a motion or that there's some likelihood that you will approve a motion. For example, the motion in, uh, that I'm speaking of is section 10 dash 25 dash 375 in the minutes of September 24. And what what would be useful is for city council members to know exactly what they're voting on. And for the Montpelier citizens to know exactly what you're voting on. And then when you read the minutes, we can all know what was being voted on. I think that that particular motion. And I'm not, this is not nefarious. This is, this is not about blaming. This is just about making sure we're very clear, especially on difficult motions, contentious motions, expensive motions. Um, that we're just absolutely precise in what we are saying and what people are voting, what people are seconding, and then what people are voting on. Um, and that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Giovanna.
Thank you so much, Jack.
Anybody else? Sandy.
Sandra Vitstum, 14 Loomis Street. Um, I'm speaking right now because I have actually to be at another meeting right now. I urge the city to pursue another route to develop Country Club as soon as possible. A lot of time and a lot of money is being wasted. And the council is getting backed into making a very poor decision for the city. This mistake could cost the city millions of dollars. The council was told three falsehoods on September 10th. Number one, the city does not need to hire a Realtor at this stage of developing Country Club. Two, there are in fact plenty of other consultants and better planners, in my opinion, who are interested in helping the city. We were told that there were no other choices. Third, there is no rush. The city cannot possibly meet the readiness standards that other towns have to meet for the CDBG grants. The state cannot give us money that would be safer going to other towns who are prepared. It is unethical and possibly illegal to hire a consultant without following city procurement procedures. It's foolish to proceed when the city has not seen a single financial analysis for the current design. I ran numbers last week. The project as designed is not feasible. You can see that in the top part of that spreadsheet. We taxpayers are going to be pushed into a corner to accept an awful deal. We will never know what alternatives were available. I am suggesting that the city pursue planning grants. This is the grant season. There are four grants that we are eligible for and we are encouraged to apply for. They total over $2 million for planning. We could do a lot of planning and actually go all the way through to construction documents and finish permitting the roads and the infrastructure under money that people would like to give us. We are a very high priority, as most people know, uh, for the catalyst and the borders grants. If we can do this correctly, we can do this with minimum risk to the city. I ran numbers for another alternative, which will probably never be discussed now. They would actually give the city $83 million of new ta, uh, grand list tax, tax basis. That scenario does not require any subsidies whatsoever. The, the design that you have in front of you right now, I think is going to require something like $40 million of subsidies, which I don't know how we're going to get. So I am concerned that you're going to proceed six to eight months out into next year and then hit a real roadblock or give away the farm. Literally. Um, so then uh, I do think that it would be at the very least a good idea to get a financial analysis of what you're doing. And, and please slow down. There really is no rush at this point. I'm trusting you to do this right. It affects my property. It affects my ability to keep living in Montpelier. And I think it affects our grandchildren. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room who might be heard? Steve.
Uh, I'm going to touch on a couple of things related to that motion problem in the minutes. You may want to reconsider and or reaffirm what you meant at this meeting because any decisions made by the subcommittee, if the subcommittee was improperly formed, are going to be invalid. So you might have to move on that quicker than two weeks from now. I don't want to waste any of my five minutes with that, but that's really serious. Right now, our city plan is under appeal. Our environmental assessment, the city staff have been dragging their feet for two years on that. And only when I started asking questions, is it safe for the Turtle Island kids to start going to school there? Did they start blasting emails off to Stone Environmental and say, how do we get this supplemental site assessment done? Who's going to do the testing? Is it safe? Has anybody tested around the building where the kids are going to play? The answer is no. So we are in the middle of a multi-year cleanup of a brownfield with arsenic, with lead, with mercury, with hyp, hypochlor, whatever. I don't need to memorize the chemical names, but we have soft settled or tried to sweep that under the rug and that that property needs cleanup. And until we do that cleanup, the remediation, not just the assessment, which we still haven't completed. But until we complete the assessment and do the remediation, we won't know where housing can go and where it can't go. We won't know where we have to cap versus where we have to excavate and remove truckloads and truckloads of soil. And are we going to do that while the kids are there? Are we going to do that while we reconstruct the road? This is just a huge example of poor planning. So the, uh, you need to reconsider that hiring a consultant, especially a conflicted consultant, who we paid big dollars for for a report and the main recommendation in their report was to do a phase two design. And then the same consultant is more than willing at his own profit to throw that phase two design under the rug. That's a violation of my, of state law for citizen engagement in planning. That's one of the core issues in the planning appeal, and I'm prepared to litigate that as well if I need to. Hopefully y'all will do your job and I won't need to. But it's improper to hire a consultant when we're not ready for an RFP because we haven't completed our due diligence on toxicity and remediation. And when you're hiring a consultant who made the recommendation to engage the public in a phase two design process and now is profiting by skipping the phase two design process and doing a design behind closed doors with, with a developer. So that's, that's the nutshell of it. I've got more detail, but you don't have time for it. I'll email you some stuff. Oh, so the motion was not at a contract approval. I saw an email that Ben sent saying, oh yeah, the motion included White and Burke. It's like, yeah, but that doesn't count. That, that's not a shoe in for White and Burke to get the contract. That's saying the subcommittee can consult with White and Burke on whether we are going to put an RFP together or not. That's, that's a very different thing. So I'm just saying y'all have made a mess and it's a multi-year, multimillion dollar, multi-expensive mess. And right now it's putting children at risk. So I've engaged, you know, the Secretary of Natural Resources to get her people on it and to hurry up and get the testing done to where we know it's safe for the kids to play outside. Test the soccer fields, test the area around the school, you know? But I'm, I'm just shocked that we pay this amount of money for staff and y'all are blasé about holding them accountable. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. So anybody else physically in the room would like to be, uh, heard on, on any topic? Or is there anyone online who'd like to be heard at this point? Not seeing any hands raised. All right, we can move to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exclusion of item A, which has been deleted? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Next up, we have appointments to the planning commission. Is, we have a motion for that?
I'll move the appointments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Go ahead.
I'm just wondering if anyone here wants to.
That is a good question and we will see. We have, uh,
we have one.
All right. Step right up. Thank you for coming.
Hi, everybody. I just got here, so I didn't.
Perfect.
Right on time.
Yeah.
Uh, hi, my name's Aaron Kusicki. I've been with the planning commission for seven years. Um, just asked for reappointment for two years. I just want to say very quickly, thank you for passing the city plan. Uh, that was the culmination of a lot of work with Mike Miller's team and with the commission. I'm really glad that that was passed. We're now shifting into another, uh, project. Doing sort of a front to back, uh, look and hopefully some revisions of zoning regulations. And, um, so just like to say, I'd like to be part of that project. Um, I think a lot of the information that we gleaned in the city plan process will be useful as we take a look, a closer look at the zoning regulations. So I'd be part of that project and hope I can stay on for another two years. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I just want to say like, thank you. Seven years on the planning commission, no joke, right? Asking to sign up for more. And you know, and I just want to like, uh, really congratulate you on the passage of the city plan. The fact that it won the plan of the year from the Vermont Planners Association. I believe it won some kind of award from the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. You know, having seen some of those meetings, I know how hard you folks worked and it's really impressive, the team that we have on the planning commission.
Yeah, you'd have to ask Mike Miller, but I think the plan also won an award for the, the Northern New England Plan Commission as well.
Yep.
We're, we're going to go to nationals soon.
They'll do Montpelier proud.
Yeah, we'll see what they can bring us apart, right? Um, but no, no, thanks. I, I just, it's been, it's, it's been interesting to see, um, how the commission's folk associated over the last seven years. And I'll also say that, you know, the composition of the commission now is we have a lot of new energy, but a, you know, really good creative thinking. How likely with the, with the commission. So it's exciting to have that sort of new energy to really take a fresh look at those zone regulations.
Yeah, I think this is great. You know, the city wouldn't, uh, work without all the thousands of hours of volunteer time that people put into it. And planning commission is one of those boards that we're required to have and has this best specific function. So I appreciate all your work.
Yeah, thanks. And I'd just say, you know, our, our work at the planning commission has made it a lot easier with, with, uh, Mike Miller and his staff working in tandem with us. So we're, we're very lucky to have that here in Montpelier.
And, and Leah Canlin? Not here. Okay. There's a motion to approve, uh, did it? Council members, anyone else have any questions before we let them go? Okay. There's a motion to, uh, appoint these two members and I believe there is a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thanks. Congratulations or condolences.
I don't know how to get finances.
There we go. All right, Rialto Bridge Local Concern Meeting.
Hey, Brad.
All right, we're here to talk about the Rialto Bridge.
Um, could you all identify itself?
Yep, get into that in the side here. Yep, introductions. Um, my name's Aaron Gaiet. I work for a company called PHB. Uh, we're an engineering firm. Uh, we have an office right here in Montpelier down on Greenwich Lane. Um, I spend most of my time in our Winuski office up north. Uh, joined tonight with my Jim Gish.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jim Gish. Um, I live in Middlebury. I'm excited to be here tonight.
Jim is working on the public engagement side of things for the project and we'll talk a little bit more about that in just a moment. Uh, we also have two other colleagues here, uh, Dylan Soder and Jason Keener.
Thank you all for being here.
Quickly wanted to identify our project team here. This really is a Vtrans-led project. This is in the program that's called the Town Highway Bridge Program. So funding for the project comes from the federal government, Vtrans, and there is a local match. Obviously, the city is a partner in the project. It's a city-owned bridge. Better Highway Administration provides the federal side of the funding. Um, GPI is a consultant, um, that we have as a, as a subconsultant to us, providing some constructability input. And Matt McDonald is, uh, providing geotechnical engineering support. Assuming you're all very familiar with the location, but for those who aren't, State Street downtown. Uh, we're at the very beginning of the Vtrans project development process. Uh, as you might imagine, Vtrans has a very set scripted process they follow for development of all of their projects. Um, we're in what's called the scoping phase where we're gathering information. Uh, we're going to be developing alternatives for the, for the project. We'll be evaluating those alternatives, putting them into a report, um, and then presenting back our recommendation um, to all of you. We've completed a site visit. Uh, Vtrans has gathered a bunch of information themselves. Uh, survey's been done. Um, utility information's been gathered. Uh, but there's still more information to gather. There will be some geotechnical whorings that occur. Um, there will probably be more site visits that happen. But today we're talking about, um, really it's the lo, local concerns. Uh, we know some of the local concerns, but really we want to hear from all of you. We know some of the local concerns, but really we want to hear from all of you and we want to hear from the public on concerns related to the bridge, concerns related to the project in general, concerns about downtown. And we'll take that information, it'll go into our process here as we look at alternatives and we look at how the bridge could be replaced and reconstructed. After the, the scoping phase is done, we'll have a preferred alternative. That, that preferred alternative really will come from all of you, from the city council. We'll move into preliminary design from there and the NEPA process, just the National Environmental Policy Act. So evaluation of the project for its impacts on the, the environment. We'll move into right-of-way, any right-of-way impacts. Environmental permitting, the project will go into final design and then finally it'll enter the construction phase. So the existing conditions. Just a couple of shots of State Street. Think these are all familiar, familiar sites to all of you. To point out here, some of the things that we're looking at, we're looking at the lane configurations, we're looking at the parking. Looking at the nice wide sidewalks that you have downtown and, and really the vibrancy of those sidewalks. Trying to envision how that looks when the bridge is replaced. We have the bridge itself. This is a part of the plans from the original bridge construction. I believe it was 1915. So this bridge has performed over its service life and it is, as you can imagine, nearing the end of its service life. Jim and I were just catching up a little bit before the meeting and there's not a lot of bridges this old around the state, so. Here's some pictures of the underside of the bridge. You can see that there is deterioration that's occurring. The bridge has seen some better days. I will say it's not unsafe, but it is, it is certainly showing signs of wear and tear. We have a draft purpose and need statement. This is a statement that really guides the design team through the alternatives process. We refer back to this and we take the alternatives that we're developing and we make sure the alternatives are meeting this purpose and need statement. We'll, we'll refine this as we go through the early part of the scoping here, but really this, this is kind of the vision for the project. It's used throughout the NEPA process when we're evaluating that preferred alternative throughout that process. So as we think about design alternatives and we think about the historic nature of the project, really there's, there's four general alternatives that we consider. There's the no action. For NEPA, for a scoping process, really it's a requirement to consider no action. That wouldn't meet the purpose and need statement, so it's, it's usually pretty easy to eliminate that. There's bridge rehabilitation. Which, which could be a minor rehabilitation, it could be a major rehabilitation. There is some merit to looking at rehabilitation. However, we'll get to this a little bit later in the presentation. What we've learned through following along the State Street Drainage Project is the composition of the abutments. And as you saw from the pictures of, of the superstructure, the beams, there's a lot of deterioration happening there. We think it's prudent to replace the superstructure. We were kind of wondering about the substructure though, if they're cooking a rehabilitation of the substructure and potentially just, just replacing the infrastructure. Seeing the, the core through the abutment though, it's, I've got some pictures of it. It's composed of cast-to-place concrete on each face and then there's laid-up stone basinry in the core of those abutments. It would feel like it probably is. Not, not trying to get too far ahead of ourselves, but it probably is the right call to replace those abutments as well. If we're looking at a new hundred years service life for the next bridge. So rehabilitation is a reality, but maybe ruled out. New bridge on new alignment, there, there's no real place to put a bridge on a new alignment here. There's a lot of infrastructure around, you can see from the aerial photo, as you know, from downtown, there really is no, no place to put a bridge on a new alignment, so that would be eliminated. So that, that kind of leaves us with new bridge on existing alignment as the likely alternative that we're looking at. And then we would develop alternatives for the bridge type and the phasing. For the new bridge on the existing alignment. A few key considerations that, that we've already identified. Mobility being number one. It is likely that the bridge would need to be closed for replacement. And so as, as we look at closing a street-like State Street. How are we maintaining bicycle pedestrian traffic? How are, how are we maintaining vehicular traffic so that people can still get to the destinations? And then unique to this project, how are we maintaining access to the Rialto building itself, which has access from the existing bridge? This is just brainstorming. Really kind of basic potential detours here for vehicular access and bike path access. The access to the Rialto building, we said there's, there's three access points from the bridge itself. And as we are working to replace the bridge, how are we maintaining that access to those three access points? There is the historic considerations, the bridge itself, as you can imagine, 1915, it's a historic bridge. There are historic aspects of it, such as the railing, which are, they contribute to that, that they contribute to the historic attributes of, of that downtown region, that downtown area. So the new bridge likely will have requirement for some type of aesthetic railing that fits with the context. There are the buildings that are adjacent to the bridge, so each of those five buildings that each of the four corners and the Rialto building itself, they're all historic buildings. So we need to take that into consideration. There's a lot of infrastructure down there that's underground. Apologize, it's a little bit blurry, but this is a GIS view of the city's mapped utilities. There's there's water, there's sewer, there's electric. There's telecommunications. So there's a lot of, a lot of utilities to work around there within the street itself, streetlights. So then there's some other considerations that, that we have as well. We've reviewed and, and we understand and we reviewed the downtown master plan. Like this is a document from around the year 2020. Developed. We know there's some recommendations for this area and the, and the bridge itself, so we're taking that into consideration. These pictures on the right are from the State Street Drainage Project. It was great. We spent, we spent a bit of time coordinating with, with Kurt and his crew at Public Works to be able to get down here and, and take a look. It's construction was ongoing. Really fascinating to see what's underground there. There was, along with, you know, the gravels and, and what you'd expect, there was a lot of timber buried in the street. Granite cobbles underneath the pavement, concrete. So it's helpful to understand what's there from that aspect. The picture that's kind of in the middle at the top of the screen is, is the core through the abutment. And this is where the new drainage outfall goes through the abutment. You can see there's concrete on the face. In the middle is that laid-up stone basinry. The bridge aesthetics, we know are important. Being in the, in the historic district and being a historic bridge itself, the railing, we talked about previously. The lighting that's on the bridge, we know that's an important aspect. And so, but those are, those are items that will take into our alternatives development process. And we also know stakeholder engagement, extremely important on this project. We've been coordinating with, with Kelly, with Kurt. Along with property owners, business owners, residents, as well as Montpelier Alive. This is really Jim's kind of forte and why he's part of the project. So I think maybe Jim to say just a couple of words about your ongoing efforts.
Sure, thanks, Eric. I appreciate that. Again, my name is Jim Gish. I live in Middlebury. I work as a community liaison for BHB. And I wanted to say a word or two about how we're going to approach stakeholder engagement on what's going to be a challenging project for Montpelier. The kind of, you know, standard practice for public engagement in a, in a project like this is to hold a couple of public meetings, put up a website, put out periodic emails, occasionally update city council, the select board, et cetera. And that's kind of standard practice boilerplate for public engagement. But a few years ago, V-Trans began investing in a new approach to, to stakeholder engagement. Particularly for complex projects that are taking place in our crowded downtowns. And so that led to the position of community liaison. So the idea behind a community liaison is that a person is embedded in both camps. They're embedded in community and they're embedded on the project team. So the community liaison understands all the decisions that are being made at the project team level. They've also fully documented the concerns, local concerns and issues. What kind of long-term ones as well as the short-term ones inevitably crop up. So basically you've got this kind of continuous communication between the community and the project team. It's facilitated by a community liaison. And that kind of sustained approach to engagement has worked really well for us. Aaron and I with, with V-Trans kind of pioneered the concept of the community liaison during the six years of the Middlebury Rail and Tunnel Project. Okay, these were two failed bridges on Merchants Row and on Main Street in Middlebury. Didn't make it as far as the Rialto Bridge had before they failed, but they were then replaced by a rail tunnel. If you know Middlebury, this is right in the heart of Middlebury, similar to the Rialto Bridge being right in the heart of Montpelier. So if we had experience of kind of how to manage the trickiness, the complexities of that situation. And since then, I've gone on to manage other bridge projects in Bellows Falls, Virgens and a, and a federal scoping study in, in, in Hason County focused on truck traffic on 22A. So we kind of developed the, the concept behind the community liaison and have had a chance to work it out too. I think in this scoping study, what's going to be important is to document concerns and issues and make sure that all voices are heard. That's, that's, there's a lot that needs to take place there, but it's so important to, 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 to invite everyone to the table. Make sure their voices are heard and then to make sure that the project team that's planning this project has an opportunity to react to that and to understand how things look at street level locally here. The, the goal of all of this is to, is to move the project forward with less cost, you know, less impact and less time taken too. If everything works, things move smoothly forward. And so, so we've kind of gotten on the ground here, as Aaron said, we had a chance to meet with Kelly and with Kurt. We met with the, the two, I would say, most concerned property owners, Jesse Jacobs and Steve Everett to kind of lay things out for them. We had a chance to meet with Katie Troutz and with two of your business owners downtown, Lauren Parker and Karen Williams. We'll continue that. I was surprised to find in kind of doing my research that there are, by my count, forty-seven businesses and nonprofit organizations in the one block between Elm Street and Main Street. Both feet level and upstairs, so we've got some work to do. And that's just kind of ground zero there. You know, there are certainly many other stakeholders there. So, so my message is to you is that this is an important project for us to degree. I know we're only at the planning level here. But, but we're fully focused on making sure that all those folks are reached out to. And then as we go through the process of arriving at a preferred alternative, it's with, it's with all the right forces having been heard and brought to you as well as to the V-Trans team for final decisions.
Right, thanks, Jim. So our next steps are to really prepare those alternatives, evaluate them, prepare our scoping report. And then back in front of all of you for our alternatives presentation meeting. From a schedule standpoint, we're looking at, working through the scoping process this fall, winter. With having really a recommended alternative in the, in the spring to summer of next year. We'll then move into the preliminary design, preliminary plans. There's all the right-of-way permitting that happens, looking at final design, complete by, by twenty-nine. And then construction at some point in the future. It's, it's undetermined the exact year, but it would be the early 2030s when construction would occur.
That's a long way off, but it would sort of be a sharing news to bring to the, to the stakeholders on, on State Street. If this is not happening, then we have a, I'm, I know.
Yeah.
So with, with that, we really want to kind of open up the floor to all of you, hear from you and then potentially hear from any members of the public. Maybe before I do that, I'll just mention two names that are, that are on here from V-Trans that couldn't make it tonight, but Laura Stone is the project manager for V-Trans throughout the scoping phase. And then Jonathan Griffin would be the project manager when it transitions into the design phase. So we're, we're here to listen. If there's questions, we can, we can try to answer them, but really we want to kind of record your questions, your thoughts and your concerns.
All right, thanks. We have, I'm sure we'll have comments and questions from council. We also have at least one person who's already a member of the public who wants to be heard. Then.
I have just two questions. One is sometime in the early 2030s, and I'm just wondering if we can talk more about that timeframe and what determines that, right? And then the second question is, I guess maybe for Jim, I think I remember in the Middlebury project. Either it was the Middlebury Partnership or the Chamber or somebody applied for USDA funds to help mitigate impacts in downtown businesses. And it just strikes me that if we've got some time here, you know, planning for mitigation for, for, you know, the impact that the businesses are definitely going to feel, whether that's additional marketing or short-term loans or, you know, whatever those tools are. And I'm wondering, is there any provision for that in any of this kind of, you know, federal highway funding running through V-Trans? You know, just what, what your experience has been with that, because like bringing them to the table is great, but what are we offering them in terms of support during what's going to be a very disruptive process?
Maybe you want to address the cost for this now, so you can talk about what this could present to them and you might.
Sure, I guess, you know, from a project development standpoint. It's kind of two different funding scenarios. One of them is kind of the standard funding, which is eighty percent federal, ten percent state, ten percent local match. Back in 2012, I believe it was Act 153 maybe was passed, which has allowed V-Trans to offer municipalities that are in the Town Highway Bridge Program. If you elect to close the bridge and you don't have a temporary bridge, you're eligible for fifty percent reduction in your share. So it was from ten percent down to five percent. And then V-Trans would, would pay fifteen percent and federal government still pays eighty percent.
My question was about timing.
I, I, I was gonna say, I don't think we answered everything. The timeframe is, is very much a budget question. And, you know, with budget uncertainty in the years to come, it's hard to say exactly which year funding would be available for this project. And, and I don't, I think that's why V-Trans is not necessarily committing to, it's going to be this exact year, but, but rather that timeframe. And, and I'll say, you know, V-Trans manages a lot of projects, right? And things do move from year to year. Things, projects will move up as the need gets more and more and projects will slip as budgets are, are thought out.
James, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to have a quick response to about the.
I just wanted to have a quick response to about the grant. You know, so yeah, Middlebury had a USDA grant, a relatively minor. I'd say that the biggest impact um, uh, grant wise. In Middlebury was from V Trans. And um, it was in direct response to the volume of volunteer. Uh, effort that was put forth in Middlebury. We had a group called neighbors together that formed specifically around maintaining quality of life. During this uh, six years of this project. I think at the time we uh, we um, asked for grants to uh, to uh, market the downtown businesses. We, we logged a thousand volunteer hours. And so V Trans saw that as an indication of the town's willingness to, to put themselves to work here. And in return, we worked out um, a grant over several years that allowed us to do. To basically to promote the downtown while all this activity was taking place in the center of town.
I guess I just, I wanted to make one point about, about that. There were no grants. To pay businesses directly, and that was not the intent. The intent was to. Um. Have the grants to be able to support the downtown in general, so. That's an important distinction.
Okay, Jim.
Um, first of all, I haven't worked with you on another thing one time. I know that. Like part of the bridge starts to collapse, you will speed it up. Because um, I know when we did the roundabout, it was ten years and I called after about eight years and said, well, how do we speed this up? Well, if you can find a volunteer that. Passes away in an accident, they'll probably start tomorrow, so. I do know that, you know, if there's a danger point, it will be speeded up. My main question is, there's a. How much do you work with a building that's over the river like that? That is going to be right next to the bridge. How do you make sure that is not compromised, seeing how it's just kind of suspended there?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question and um. You know, there will be some investigation, not just with that building, but with. All of the surrounding buildings as to the composition. And really what they can withstand from a vibration standpoint.
That one probably is a real concern in a way, I would imagine.
Yeah, it, it is. Yeah, they're all, they're all a concern because they're all historic, right? And, and I think. It, it really is the composition that. You know, what are the materials that have, have uh. Been put into that building? Um, and how much can it withstand from a vibration standpoint? And then once we understand that, then we can put that into the contract documents. Of those limitations that the contractor needs to adhere to.
Is that an unusual correction? You have a building over the river like.
The, the, the configuration of having the Rialto building over the river is, is abnormal for Vermont. Um. I think the same principles apply. Um, it's not abnormal to have buildings near construction, right, or very much adjacent to construction. Um, so yeah, safeguarding those buildings is, and the safety of the. The people that are in them is a fair amount.
Thank you.
Sal.
Um. I know it's, it's uh, early days, but I'm just wondering, you know, you've mentioned a six-year project. I'm assuming this will be a shorter duration, but it's likely to be longer than the recent disruption. With the um. You know, the stormwater line. Um, is it likely to span um? Several season changes? What, what do you do in the winter? I mean, how, how does that work? Uh, you know, the. The residents. The tenants, um, the businesses. You know, will be really disrupted. I'm just curious if you can. Take a stab at, you know, what, what's the duration that we're contemplating? I realize it's a ways off, but.
Yeah, that, that's exactly one of the things that we're going to be looking at through the scoping process um, and, and the alternatives. Um. If it's a traditional construction. Project and it's. You know, working. From. You know, sunup to sundown, five days a week. Um. And if it's. Phased project. Um, that could add to the schedule. There's also some alternatives that. Could be using accelerated bridge construction. Where it may be more intense. Um, disruption where. Around the clock work, but for a shorter duration. Um, we think, you know, there is some possibility to, to make this. Uh, quite a short um. Disruption from a vehicle, like having the road open, having the bridge open. Um, but potentially there's additional disruption beyond that, just from construction noise uh, in the downtown area. So those are, those are uh. Parts that we're looking at as part of the alternatives and, and we'll put back in front of you. Um. With the, with the alternatives.
I have a feeling that your. Your sense of short and my sense are, are different.
What is your guess?
Um. Well, short would be a couple of months, you know, but.
Yeah, I, I will say, you know, V Trans has a pretty good track record with their accelerated bridge program. Um. They've done a number of projects that have been like a twenty-eight day closure, thirty-five day closure. Um.
Well, it sounds like you're sensitive to the issue and I appreciate that. A lot, and I'm, I know that the folks downtown will greatly appreciate and, and will tell you that.
Yeah, I think the thing to consider is, you know, if we can um. You know, design a bridge that has a lot of. Prefabricated elements. Those can be put, you know, they're fabricated offsite, they're brought to the site, they're put together. Um, that can really speed up construction. Uh, so those are the things that we're going to be looking at and schedule is a, a main driver in a, in a situation like this. Uh, where we want to limit those impacts.
Right, thank you.
What, would it, would it be fair to say that? The city values. The shorter duration.
I think it'd be fair to say that.
I think so.
There'll be their trade-offs, but probably yes.
Yep.
Barry, Adrian, do you have anything? Hey, Wade Cleveland, I see you've got your hands up. And Bella, I didn't know, I couldn't see all the way down to you. Do you have anything?
Yeah.
Okay. Wade Cleveland, are you still there? Here we are.
Uh, I just wanted to know if there are any current structure, uh, any, are there any current major deficiencies with the bridge?
Um. There, there, the, I will say the bridge is not unsafe. As I mentioned. Um. There is concrete that's deteriorating. You can see that in the pictures. Um. This is a unique. Composition where it's. Uh, it, it's, it appears to be riveted. Plate girders. Uh, that are encased in concrete. And um. The concrete is starting to come off the exterior of those plate girders. But the plate girders themselves. Um, due to appear to be in, in. Pretty good shape still. Um, so I, I don't, I don't know that I, that I've completely answered your question, but. Um. It is, it is deteriorating. It is something that the, the state is keeping an eye on. I should mention that this, this bridge is inspected by the state. You all know that, that it's. Part of their two-year inspection. Uh. So it, it does get, you know, attention from the state uh, every, every two years. If a bridge gets to the point where there start to be major concerns that. Um. Inspection timeframe will shrink to. A year normally is the first step, and then it could, it could be six months, it could be every month. Um, I believe it's still, still a two-year inspection cycle though.
Any other questions from members of the public? John.
John Snell, live on First Avenue, have been in town for fifty years now. And uh. I have a couple uh. Concerns uh. This project that, as I remember it, was talked about being completed in the early twenties. So it's a ten-year jump. Uh, I know that at that point in time, repairs were made. Uh, to, to keep it going, but this has been on the table for a long time. One of my concerns is we rebuild the bridge. But what about the rest of the? The, the. Street from State Street all the way through Elm Street and beyond. Uh, my understanding is that there are. People, and maybe DPW can talk about that at some point. People who have talked about rebuilding that street sidewalk to sidewalk. I don't know whether that changes with what happened this last summer. But one of my interests. In this is getting more trees in. We lost four trees. In the recent project. And the, the. Only way we can put more in now is. Pretty substantial. Uh, and would be silly to do only unless we were in a bigger project and could incorporate uh, tree wells into that. But for us to even plant the four trees that, that are dead now. You know, we may get five years out of them, but that's it because they're in four by four by two-foot pits. And trees just don't live that way. Um, I would like. I, I would love to see um. As this bridge is being designed or considered. Uh, whether or not there's an option for building in an infrastructure that would allow a riverwalk. Uh, on the north side of the, the, the bridge. Uh, I know somebody else says they own that airspace, but uh. Uh, we could at least consider it as an option. And I guess the other question I'd have for you folks is. Uh, yeah, is the structure under the stores on the south side independent of the roadway? Thank you.
Um, with regard to the, the, yeah, the structure under the Rialto building. It does appear to be a, an independent structure. Uh, we have been under there. There is a joint in between there. Um. You can see there's different. Structural composition of the two structures. Um. One of the things that, that we are looking at is. To um, do some investigation along that interface. Um, to be able to determine the competency of the, the concrete, the materials. And um. To, to potentially make some improvements um, to seal up that area. So that when this project is complete. Um, that structure that supports the Rialto building. Is also in, in good shape. But we are still, we are still investigating that.
Yes.
And, and when I second John Snell's comments, uh. The tree wells should definitely be planned while that section of. Uh, state is going to be closed. That's the time to dig in some tree wells on both sides. Between the river north branch and now. Uh. Also, we should plan for potential electric. Infrastructure because we can get under them on all our bridges. We should plan to get electric infrastructure underneath and make our bridges. Convenient charging stations for downtown. Because it's so easy to get under. It's very expensive to trench from somewhere else. Um. The. I don't think there, I don't see an easy route. I don't think Langdon Street's going to solve it, serve as a detour, so. Um. If, if there was money for a detour. Uh, even a temporary bridge type detour, it could go. From the bottom of the painty lot across. To the, the new parking lot where the chargers are. There, that's a place where you could put. Uh, you might have to cross Jacob's. Uh, the, the, the rear end of Jacob's property to do that, but that's a way that. Traffic could get through town. In both directions, um. If, if, if there's going to be a month-long disruption. Uh, I note the irony of the. Them applauding our vibrant sidewalks and think of all the merchants who didn't think of. Didn't appreciate the vibrant sidewalks while those sheeting was being pounded in. Uh. But. I think that's the gist of it. Oh, again, Riverwalk, uh. It could be that there's advantage to acquiring or resolving the issue of the air rights. If they're real indeed. In uh, as part of this bridge reconstruction. Uh, that might be. More in a wider bridge with a terrace on it, you know, a. Pocket park of some sort that would go with, consistent with the idea of the Riverwalk. But that's been a. A valid visionary topic for many years and it's, here's an opportunity to act on it. Um. That's it, thanks.
Thanks, Steve. Well, thanks. This is, this is a. Interesting thing. I remember when I was in high school reading uh, The Merchant of Venice. Uh. One of the settings of The Merchant of Venice is uh. Is the Rialto in Venice, which is a. Stock market or something built on a bridge in Venice, and I never really. Pictured how that would work. And then I moved to Montpelier and I saw the Rialto right here. Um. I think it's a good thing that we're uh. We're making, we're getting ahead, ahead of this, getting in really early so that you can talk about. The suggestions, the Riverwalk, the uh, Stockholm, oh, tree wells, uh. All the things and. Minimizing disruption to the uh. To the businesses and residences. Uh, I know that uh. On one hand, it's good that we're. Looking years in advance for um. The plan for the disruption. On the other hand. By the time the money comes down, it might be like one year from when we know the money's there to when it, when the construction happens, so. We should be prepared for that too. But I'm sure we're going to be hearing. Oh, I did have one other question. Um. In the. In the flow chart that you showed, there was like uh. There's a three-year gap between. Design and final design or something like that. What's happened during those three years?
Yeah, there's, so there's the preliminary design, um, and then there's the right-of-way process and environmental permitting process. So that would be taking place. Um, I think what we showed as well is the, the end of final design. You get into final design, that's where all the structural calculations are, are taking place and the final plan's development. And that's usually uh, you know, could, could be up to a couple of year process as well.
Okay.
Um, so there's a fair amount that happens in that timeframe.
Great.
I, I did have one question about, about the, the comment about the temporary bridge. I think as we looked at this project, we were assuming. That a temporary bridge would not be. Needed and maybe really not, not helpful. In the, the traffic. Flow downtown. Um, but now I'm wondering, it, did, did we kind of jump to a conclusion there that we shouldn't have?
Yeah, probably you get different answers from different people as. Is usually the case. My, my thinking is that if it's a month or two. We save. Half of the city's share on the. Construction to, and not do temporary bridge, but other people might have different thoughts.
Yeah. Temporary in that location versus a non-alternative root temporary bridge.
But I assume that that. If we chose to do a temporary bridge, that would probably be routing traffic through an existing parking lot and then across a temporary bridge. That would be, be the same thing, right?
Yeah, it, it would be. Yeah, there's, there's a lot of. Logistics to work through with that.
Yep. Okay, well, more to come, right?
Yeah, thank you. We appreciate your guys' time.
Thanks a lot. I'll just say again, I'm glad we're planning so far ahead for this. Yeah. All right. Next up, we are, I. Thought we would take up items eight and nine. Together because they're uh. They both relate to the use of Country Club Road. Um. And eight is the. Is a use policy for dogs and nine is. Hunting. Are you kicking this off?
Sure, um, so I just with, for both the items, um, just for general awareness, um. We did have recreation put together a um, use of Country Club Road. Um, since we first uh, bought the property, there has been. Quite a bit more use in that location. And so just to let folks know what we're up to up there, we've got youth soccer, childcare rentals, there's cross-country skiing, cross-country running, disc golf. Soccer camps are up there, gardening. Um, there are walkers there quite a bit. Um, there are bike riders. Um, there are dogs um, with their owners. Uh, there is, has been some hunting in the past, and then we have city-sponsored events. Um, and so that, that's just a, you know, a, a pretty big list of use. Um. And so for the purposes of the first uh, item on the agenda, so. and so for the purposes of the first, uh, item on the agenda associated with dogs and Country Club Road, we did receive, uh, a few complaints. Um, one, uh, was related to our youth sports programs, um, and just trying to figure out a way to, um, have both, you know, uh, youth sports programs and, uh, dogs and their owners coexist. Um, there, you know, have been instances where, you know, maybe there have been, um, you know, some messes on the fields or that, you know, maybe, you know, dogs aren't as controlled as they could be. Um, and then the other instance is that now that we have, um, Turtle Island, um, and the old clubhouse, um, the Elks Building, um, just making sure that the dogs are not in and around that space, especially, um, with kids. So, um, just thinking about what that might look like in your packet, there is draft, um, use language um, that could be included in the policy that we currently have. There is a little bit of language in the existing policy, um, that does speak to, um, dogs either being used, uh, leashed or under voice control. Um, we have taken precautions at this point to, uh, sign the property. Um, just so folks are aware of expectations, um. And so really, uh, just opening up for conversation in terms of, you know, how you'd like to proceed um, with this particular item, um, just for the folks at home, in case you haven't seen what's in the packet. Um, what we would be suggesting is that, um, maybe considering the following language be included in the use policy and so staff would just add this as an amendment. Um, but that dogs using Country Club Road must be leash-held times or under effective voice control in designated areas. And that designated area piece is something that, um, council would need to decide. Um, what you might consider is that there's a, uh, equipment barn or garage and everything that is over towards the, the parking lot of the building, dogs will need to be leashed and then everything beyond sort of the garage is where we could have dogs off-leash. Um, then that way there's a, a good distinct area for, uh, that purpose. Um, and so just then going on with, uh, what's in the, uh, packet, um, see, so we've got the designated area and then meaning that dog remains in the handler's sight and responds immediately to voice or hand commands at all times. Handlers must carry a leash and leash if their dog um, does not respond to commands, is approached by users with other dogs and is entering any area where dogs might be leashed under the posted signage. So just making sure that there's just, you know, some thoughtfulness that's going around, uh, with folks using, uh, Country Club Road. And then there's just a piece here about additional expectations that dogs would not harass or chase wildlife, owners would clamp up after their dogs. Dogs that display aggressive or overly bolsterous behavior must be leashed immediately. And then the voice control is a privilege and misuse or repeated non-compliance may result in restriction or enforcement, uh, per the city ordinance, which are also included in the packet. Um, so with that, um, I don't know if you want to open this up to discussion?
Yeah. Folks, Carrie.
Yeah, thank you for bringing this up. Um, uh, I, I, I appreciate the, the sort of, um, filling out of the policy here. It, it is though what we currently have as our policy and, and under the ordinance, which is your dog has to be on a leash or under your voice control at all times. Um, and I, and I think it's a good idea to kind of spell that out more. And, um, and I don't think that it's worth the risk of allowing unleashed dogs in that area where there are kids playing soccer, where there's childcare, where there's, you know, lots of people, like especially lots of kids around all the time. So I really like the idea of making that area that's by the parking lot and to the equipment shed and by the building, just that area right there, they, your dog has to be on a leash. And so when you get out of your car in the parking lot to walk your dog, your dog is on a leash. And you walk over to the left, you walk down there where there's acres and acres and acres and acres of land. And your dog still needs to follow all these rules, which is already the case. In Montpelier, your dog has to be under voice control. And we know there are a lot of dogs that are not under voice control, that are running around. Um, and so that's why I think it's not worth the risk because we see in areas where dogs are not required to be unleashed at all times. We see a lot of examples of dogs who are not under voice control. And this is just too risky around the kids. So that would be my, my suggestion would be that we make that area leashed at all times.
Can I go?
Yes.
Um, so I received, um, a couple of, uh, emails, just like replying to some of them while we are discussing. So, um, people are wondering if there are any other public comment, uh, opportunity for this amendment or tonight will be the only time uh, to share their public comment.
Well, this is not a proposal for an ordinance change.
Okay, okay.
So if it were an ordinance change, then we would be looking at two public hearings, uh, before we take action. Uh, since it's not an ordinance change, it's a change in policy, we could make the decision tonight. Or if members of the council think it's premature and you want to get more public comment, then we could make the decision to do that.
So I'm not a dog, I don't want to say, dog family, dog person. So I just want to be sensitive, uh, everybody's, uh, feelings and concerns. If we can highlight what you just said, uh, Jack, it will be good. Because I think some people think that it will be a really big change. So maybe we can just like make some clarification and highlight, uh, that we are not making a change. We're just like highlighting uh, the things we have already known and, thank you.
Thanks. Adrian.
So, I don't know how this is enforceable. I mean, I heard, I talked to the folks at Turtle Island while they were doing their inspection and a dog ran into the building. So I just feel like, and I've been up to Country Club Road and I, I love a dog. I'm a dog owner, but man, topic of dogs in Montpelier will bring out this entire room. So I'm very careful to talk about dog, um, because I don't want to, you know, whatever. So I just want to be very careful about whatever we do because, yeah, as this palin says, people get very emotional about any rules about dogs, but we have a childcare up at Country Club Road and a dog ran into the building. So what if there's children and that every a hundred percent of the time I get out of the car, the dog run up to me and I like dogs, but I'm not super psyched about dogs running up to me. And so what if I'm a child? And then there's soccer. So I like the idea of having the leashes around all the children and the childcare center because I don't want a child, who, I mean, who knows? I don't, I don't want something bad happening. But how do we enforce that? Like, what is the process? It's an open field. I, I'm just very concerned. I'm actually more concerned about this than like the Hubbard Park discussion that I, you know, watched from afar about dividing Hubbard Park. Because this has a childcare center, so I feel like it's a little bit more riskier. Um, so I, I don't know what the answer is. I'm just concerned and, um, I just want to prevent anything bad from happening.
Uh, Jocelyn New York, I see you've got your hand up. Did you want to say something in response to that? Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I think you raise a real good point about enforcing this. It's gonna be, it's really, really hard to enforce it. So we've seen in Hubbard Park. There are definitely people who are not abiding by the new law, the restrictions about dogs in Hubbard Park. And, um, I assume that that would probably happen at Country Club Road as well. And so we would need to really think about how are we gonna handle that a little bit differently? Maybe we have more signs. Maybe we do a public education campaign. Maybe we figure out an enforcement, uh, you know, an accountability mechanism so that if a dog runs into the childcare center, they can make a phone call and the police will come and give the person a ticket or something, you know, because right now there's just sort of no, nothing at all happens when, when a dog is out of control. So I don't know what exactly would work, but I, but yeah, that would be an important part of all this.
Anyone down on this end?
I, I'd just say that my daughter plays soccer up there. Last week I went to soccer practice and a dog, a big dog, just ran into the middle of the field while they were playing. And the kids loved the dog and we have a dog. Everybody loves dogs, but like, you know, it's, and I think the idea of a dog walking into a childcare center is, that would bother me.
So, yeah, I mean, I, I agree. I, I'm also not a dog person, but, but I've, um, you know, dogs can be excitable. I think it's a lot to ask a dog to not run into a field where kids are kicking around a ball, you know? I mean, it's, it's just a, a bit much. So I, I like the idea of a designated area leased until you get there. Enforcement is going to be an issue. And thus we can probably do education and signage and rely on uh, other folks who are observe something happening, you know, reporting it or at least keeping track of that.
Jenny.
Well, enforcement's definitely gonna be a problem because we're short the, on the police force. And I'm sure there are other things that may be more serious that they have to go to. And so I mean, to think that they got a driveway out there when there's a lot of other issues happening in this town and we know about that, we're, we're seeing them. And, um, so I'm wondering if, uh, some kind of, um, I know it's a little costly, but a fenced-in area. There's a lot of acres and some kind of fence where they could run free when they're there and dogs like to run free. We know that. People like to have their dogs get exercise and because I think you're gonna have issues where even when they're far away, a dog sometimes takes off. I was just on my walk two days ago, some little dog, not a little, it looked like kind of a, kind of a, one of the pit bulls came flying out at me and, uh, was right around my feet circling. So I just stood still and hoped. And finally the owner came out and, uh, apologized and got it away. So it's gonna happen. So sometimes a separation zone is, is where it can be the safest, where a dogs, they can take the dogs, just let it go. Nobody has to worry about it. It's fenced in. But I understand that's a cost to put a fence around, but that's probably the, gonna be the safest way. That's all I'm saying.
Adrian.
I'd be really cautious in talking about people with the dog because our next meeting can be filled. So I, I think it might, I might just propose a suggestion. Um, we know we have a problem, right? So the problem is we just want to make sure that the children are safe. We have dogs running around. We've got soccer. We know that this property is way more populated than it was two years ago. So one of the suggestions, I, I don't know how we do. I'm more than happy to do this, or if anyone wants to do this, like, go up there a couple of mornings and talk to the dog owners and see what they recommend, get their buy-in. Because if we don't get their buy-in to begin with, I mean, I've watched some of those um, meetings about the dog park in Hubbard Park and I don't really, I don't want that to happen here. So I think get their buy-in, talk to them, say, this is what we're trying to do. What do you suggest? For your dog, right? Like, what is the best, so not solutioning, but getting some input, getting some suggestions from the people that walk their dogs. And then maybe then working with them to come up with some solutions because, um, yeah, I've seen how it goes. And I'm just trying to prevent that.
If I could, I will say like when I, just reflecting on that soccer game, you know, it was also really cool sitting on the bench and seeing how many people were walking their dogs. Like I literally counted like over 10 people on that property. And it was actually really great. I was just thinking about like, here's a resource for the community that they are using. I, I, um, wonder if there isn't just like a like communal way to do this of like maybe a gentle sign that says, kids at play, like, you know, watch out for your dog or something that, you know, because it's, I, I, I really agree that the enforcement's gonna be hard, right? And so maybe just reminding people like, hey, you know, there are a lot of kids here and we just really want to take care of them.
Let me get some input from the public. Jocelyn, you've had your hand up for a long time. So why don't we start with you?
Hi, um, for those of you who don't know, I'm, I'm Jocelyn New York. I'm the co-executive director at Turtle Island. Um, and so, you know, we have been on the ground talking to, to dog owners because we've been encountering quite a few of them. Um, and kind of two big things that are coming up. One is many of them asked if there are certain hours that would be better for them to come than others. Um, and so, you know, we've been telling them what hours our children are typically outside of our fenced area, which is about nine thirty to twelve thirty. Um, and our, we don't really go out of our, our plate, like fenced-in areas, much outside of that. Um, and so that's important information just to, you know, as you're trying to figure out various policies, like maybe there's a certain hours of the day kind of thing you could do instead of a full separation. Um, also, we, there are quite a few elderly folks who have limited mobility, who have dogs, who have more energy than they do. Um, and who are looking for places that are accessible for their dogs to run, uh, who maybe live in apartments in town. Um, and so those folks, you know, if you're gonna say they need to go over past the garages, then like they're gonna have to be allowed to drive over and park over there probably. Um, which is another thing, um, because that's a, a lo, it's quite a walk to get over there from the regular parking lot right now. Um, so those are, and, you know, the folks who have been friendly and, and willing to chat with us and willing to share their concerns, those are kind of the two big things. Um, but yes, uh, enforcement is tough. We've had people I've come to talk to and tried to be friendly with who've said, no, you're the newcomers. You don't get to have a say. And just walked away from us. Um, and so, you, you know, to your point, Ben, I don't, I don't know that a gentle sign is gonna be quite effective for those folks because those are the ones who, who are the least attentive on their dogs as well. Um, we did, we have a log where teachers are writing down what is, what their experiences are. Um, and one of them just about two days ago encountered a greyhound who was off-leash, who, um, was being a bit aggressive with another dog who, uh, I always have teachers write down if they were able to locate the owner and they said at no point were they able to find the owner for this dog. Um, typically eventually one does show up. That time it did not. Um, and often we do have to wait for the owners who are yards upon yards upon yards away. Like we can't even recognize their faces. They're so far away from their dogs. Um, so this is gonna be a bigger project than a tonight thing. Adrian's right. Um, but you know, we're willing to work with the public. We don't want, we, we love dogs. We just, yeah, when we have our little group of kids, you know, some of them are scared of dogs. They're tiny. They're very exciting for dogs who love children. And those dogs often get even more excited at the sight of a group of small children walking together. Um, and you know, we don't want people to feel afraid to come. We don't want people to feel like their spot's been taken from them. Um, you know, we, we believe the outdoors are for everyone. Um, but we do, we, I'm wondering, yeah, so my, my thoughts are that we need to make sure that, that whatever works does work. Yes, Adrian, for the, for everyone. And, um, we'd be open to a, an hours restriction instead of, um, you know, a full separation.
Thanks, Jocelyn. There are a couple of people in the room. You're up first, I think. Yes.
Hello, my name's from Montpelier. I have a husky and, um, I think there's some of us that walk around eight thirty. And we've been really trying to, um, be recognized that, that people come and bring their kids. So we've been leashing our dog. We saw the signs and we were starting to do this anyway. Um, but we have been leashing the, the dogs and, um, we've been avoiding coming at four, I think, or four thirty and on Saturday mornings because of the soccer. So there are some, I just want to enter it that you guys in some ways are picking out instances that are unusual for our dogs. And I don't feel that's entirely fair. Because I think the dogs, most of the dogs that are there, they just want to go off with their buddies and they want to run. They're really not too interested in their kids. Some of them are, but, um, so I, I think the idea of, of working with, uh, um, Turtle Island and also the, the, having some kind of communication with the, the dog owners in general. I think it's been working to some extent. I mean, I don't know all the people that go, but there's one group that goes at eight thirty. There's some people that go um, maybe at four thirty. Um, then there's a couple of dog, um, walkers who, with several dogs, but they usually just go straight to the left. And the dogs, that's the part of the park that the dogs really like. That's where they can really get loose and just really run. So, um, I, I guess I feel like it could work out if, if everybody knows the rules and and we can get some kind of, um, discussion between the city and, and the dog owners. I don't, I don't want it to be like Mo, Montpelier or the, sorry, Hubbard Park either. That was, that was hard. Um, but I also feel, I think a lot of us feel that there aren't enough places in Montpelier that a dog can just run, just really run. And there are a lot of places where people can walk And they can ski and they, in some, in some ways, um, play, they play soccer. And I just wanted to to say that we are trying and um, we have talked to Turtle Island. I think a one dog going into the building is unusual, um, I think one dog going to um. To a kid is a, is is a bit unusual, most of the dogs, like I said, really wanna be with each other, that's, that's why they're there. Um, what else I was gonna say? In terms of the the recall, I know that's been a problem, several of us have have gotten. Collars that um, will buzz the dog and that's worked pretty well, so I think there is a recognition that there can be a problem. But I just wanna iterate that people are trying to, that focus up, get their dogs to focus and come, um.
Thanks. Mister Marano?
Everybody does that, it's not Marano.
Martin, no, sorry, well, there's another Mar, you know, there's another. I thought I was doing well to remember anything.
You know, I didn't say anything every time, hi, Murray Spargo, six Scrivener Street. I, I, I walk my pug and my pud wannabe there, it's a bad little Bassett house mix. We get away from everything there, however, they're always with me, but at the same time. You heard it, dog walkers take their dogs there, they don't even live in Montpelier. There's, it's being used by a lot of people and it's great. However, why don't we just have all the Montpelier residents register their dogs there at Turtle Island, give them a red pen. Something so that they designate they are from Montpelier, they walk for free. And if there's anything wrong, we know their dogs registered and there's a problem, we talk to the owner. People that aren't from Montpelier, you have to come and register and you pay a fee. And if your dog doesn't act well, I'm sorry, this is for Montpelier residents only. Maybe it'll work, maybe it won't, I don't know, just an idea.
Thanks. Did I miss anyone else who started right there, Steve?
Yeah, I think. Part of this is the uh, kind of fuzzy thinking between a. Using the word policy, rules, ordinance and not really distinguishing, you know, if if we're. We use the same policy to decide that nobody can camp there, it's not enforceable, anybody can camp there, you know, and. They can tell the clowns who put the policy together to pound sand. Uh, but we just heard the news of a two-year-old that was killed by a dog, by a pair of dogs, you know. Uh, recently, not, not in Montpelier, not even in Vermont, but. It does happen and there are aggressive dogs and there are dogs that are triggered by different, you know, I'm not. Taking a stand one way or the other on this, but. I also wanna look long term, if if people are telling Turtle Island that you're the newcomers, we've got a right to walk our dogs. How's that gonna work when people start buying lots and building houses up there, you know, are we creating an entitlement? You know, that we're not gonna be able to withdraw from, that, that's a problem, so, uh. Citations, I mean, we got people right in the French's block who let their big dogs go out and crap on the. Fourteen sixteen empty lot or behind where the car chargers are, we've got no enforcement to pick that up. And certainly, these owners aren't gonna walk to the far end of the field. To where, to follow their dog to pick up whatever crap's out there, so. I think that we need a, and the fence thing, the fence idea is, it it might work to keep a fence around it. Figuratively, uh, because, but the fence probably getting in the way of our site remediation. I mean, somebody's gotta go out and map and test every so many feet and and dig down and find the concentrations of toxins. And decide whether we take it off six inches of soil or two feet of soil. And I can imagine the environmental engineers aren't gonna wanna work around a fenced dog park, so. This is again, a cluster screw of planning that has not been done right and uh. You could either make it worse or make it better, but the. We don't really have, I, you can't rely on goodwill and trust and. Work, cooperation to manage dogs that are wild animals, really, um. So unless we're gonna implement something, make it an ordinance, use video to ticket people, you know. I'm not sure the the ma- mechanics of that, but it shouldn't have to take a cop out, it shouldn't need to take a cop out of town to go out there. To ticket somebody if you know who the owner is and you know who the dog is.
Thanks, Steve. Oh, I will, I wanna get to the other people, Elena Gustafson?
Hi, thank you, I'm Elena Gustafson, I live over on Westwood in District Two. Um, I, I think I'm just weighing in on this as somebody who is a dog owner and loves dogs and. Every opportunity I have to let her off leash, I do, uh, but I am also somebody who believes very strongly in leash laws. Um, and really, we have to put the well-being of our children and those who are in public land. Above our animals, um, so I would just encourage us to look back to Turtle Island. Um, as Jocelyn had already outlined. Uh, that they would be amenable and open to um, hours, I think it's a great idea. I would also disagree with the previous speaker in that I think that generally is a population, social contracts. Are really quite effective, so if we are. Communicating with our population at large, with our dog owners at large and keeping in mind their needs. As well as those who are most vulnerable in our population, I think we could actually come to some agreement that would be quite effective. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other council members have thoughts? Um, I didn't tell you, I, I know that, that not being a dog person myself, but I know that uh. That people really, um. Really appreciate the ability to have their dogs just, just run loose and uh. It's seems to be good for the dogs and the dogs like it, and I, I know from. My experience of being up at Hubbard Park and having people. People's dogs run up to me and. The, everybody has know, always known that the rule was the people that, the dog had to be on leash or on, under voice control. And the dog runs up to you and you can't see the owner, well, obviously, if the owner can't see their dog, the dog is not under voice control. Because they don't know what the dog is doing, so that makes me come around to thinking that we can't rely on people's goodwill to say they're gonna. Make sure their dog is only where it's supposed to be, um. So some kind of physical separation seems very important to me, whether it's physical separation by a fence or just by distance. Seems uh. I'm not sure what, what the way to go on that is, but it seems like. One, we haven't had very much input from dog owners here and I think that uh. Since they're affected, I, I think we should, um. So uh, so I, I would suggest that we take this up again to. Give dog owners a chance to be heard, even though Adrian points out, it could be kind of a bloodbath when it happens. Uh, I, I saw the uh, some of the Hubbard Park hearings too, and so I know people have big feelings about this. Um. But I suggest we bring up, we have council, we have staff either. Come back with, with a policy that we would tell them what, what we want in it, or just come back with this policy and say we're gonna have a. Public hearing to have, uh, have people come in and state their opinion before we act on it. But I'm open. Well, that very, that very well could, could be, and so I'm open to suggestion on what the instructions should be.
I'm fine with another meeting that where they could come in, I, I think this is, if we don't and this is done. We're gonna hear about it one way or another and really, seriously, you wanna be really safe, I'm talking offense. I'm talking some kind of physical separation because something will happen. Because when I was on the walk, it was the little dog that was barking at me. That excited the scary dog that came at me and then the other. Both dogs were circling me and the owners were not far away and I'm looking at them like, hello. And fun, but something will happen guaranteed and so. I, you know, I know it's gonna cost something to, to do a fence, but I think that's the safest way in my opinion, but.
Very.
Um, I think it's a good idea to not take any action tonight and to let. Publicly in dog owners and also other people who are not dog walkers and have opinions. Um, and I think we've got a few suggestions that have floated up here, so there's the idea of a fenced off area, there's the idea of. Restricting one area to on leash at all times, here's the idea to setting up certain hours during the day. When Turtle Island is open, when soccer's happening or whatever else it is, I don't, I don't know what that would be. Um, so those are, those are three possibilities, oh, and then there's, of course. Making them be on leash on the entire property all the time, which I don't think anyone is really subjecting, but it, you know, that's something that could happen. So I would suggest that we come back to this, we keep these, these possibilities. Kind of alive and we hear from the public and then we decide what the most appropriate action is after we've done that.
That work for everybody?
Well, I agree, it's a wonderful opportunity to work collaboratively to find a good solution.
All right, we'll get that on the agenda. Kelly, I'll figure it out, I don't know, I'm not sure if there's space on the agenda yet for our next meeting, but we'll figure it out.
Just that.
All right, hunting. Now that we've gotten through one easy topic. Do you wanna say anything more about hunting before we? Mister Martin, no, are you the person who wrote to us?
Yes, I am.
I thought so.
I had a big law speed that. Where he's back no six Scrivener Street, basically, uh, you know, from days of. Elks owning it, I hunted up there, you know, asked permission of the board other years also and then given it, but as. I've been walking around and scouting and doing a lot. Up there, I don't know if you're aware of how much, how many vacant sites are up there. Um, I could tell you right now, if the city were to leave a dump truck there for the weekend. In the parking lot, I could fill it with just tents of how many are up there. Uh, you know, every valley, every crevice that's near water has got. Tens that have been abandoned, children's clothes, toys, I mean, I understand why they're there and I'm, and it hurts. Um, I'm an outdoor enthusiast that I come out of the woods with something every time and it's usually trash. Because that's what I do, but I need help on this one and I'd like to be able to hunt up there. Uh, archery only, um. Abundance of deer, um, you'll see them in the fields a lot and there'll be a lot of starvation. I lived on Sixth Scrivener Street and I had nine does in my backyard. Uh, they're not gonna make it, you know, it's the clear cut up above that was done. That was going to be a nice addition of homes for, for us, but. They have also taken a lot of vegetation that those deer were. Um, so I just wanna ask permission to hunt out there, but I also want you to know that. Hunters are advocates of the outdoors. And I want you to give me the permission to pick up that mess.
So before you go, I've got a couple of questions for you, you specifically mentioned crossbows.
Yes.
And, yeah, but. Um. A crossbow is different from a regular bow or a compound bow and it. I assume it, uh, it shoots. Farther and with more force, is that right?
Yeah, a true hunter will only shoot within. I've killed range and I'll need to be so blunt, I, I've never shot anything over forty yards with a bow. It, there, you can hit something at a hundred, hundred and twenty-five yards if you want. But that's not fair to the animal, it's not fair to me, because I'm not gonna fight that and he's gonna die and she's gonna die. That's, that'd be wasted, that's not what a hunter does.
But if you miss, it could go, you're aiming at something forty yards away, if you miss, it could go. A hundred or a hundred fifty yards, right?
I'm always aware of my backdrop. Always. That's all I can tell you and there's no way. I would prefer to shoot in a tree stand, so I shoot down. There is no way it could ricochet. If you're worried about that and I understand that, it's not a high-powered rifle. And I don't. I've never had a bad day in the woods. You can just sit there and watch a chip on for four hours, it doesn't matter, you're in the woods. But it's across the street from me and I've already done some scouting and I can tell you right now, there's three bucks running around up there and there's seven does. And I, I mean, put on a trail camera, I'm just walking around. So there's an abundance of deer there and they're not all gonna make. And you know darn well there are no flowers growing, any of the homes around, uh. That area or, you know, it's an abundance of deer.
So what did we say the last time it came up, came to us asking for permission to do this?
It was archery only, and that was it and. You know, there wasn't any, you know, only one or, you know, the, whatever, nothing, it was just archery's a lot. And that was it and uh. I, the thing is, is I hate to be so selfish, but living on Scrivener Street is right across the street. So I can hunt very easily and uh, and it's, it's hard to get off these days.
Can you remind us of the season for both?
October to December.
October, thank you.
Muzzleloader is.
So Oc- October to December first or through December?
Through December.
Through December.
October first until November fifteenth, which is the first day of rifle, there's a two-week or so break. And then you can pick up with, uh, oh, again, yeah.
Any other questions for anybody? Um, so. How many uh, how many hunters are, are there, do you, do you know how, I mean, how many hunters you run into up there? Is it a certain part of the property or is it?
The only other time, there was a gentleman that came three or four years ago at the same time. And he sets up his, like by the shed, the uh.
Maintenance shed?
Maintenance shed, there's a nice valley right there and that's a funnel for deer and he would set it, he stand there. And I said, well, I'm setting up on the power line and fine, and he, he said, yeah, there was a six point of the. Walked by the other day, I didn't have a good shot, so good luck, but we spun a year away and never saw him, but. That was years ago, I don't think there's anybody else up there. And I was just, I was just kinda surprised, just walking a third of the area. Man, I didn't realize how many people were living up there, it's just.
Well, you know, I know, I know a lot of hunters who are, um, you know, they show a lot of reverence for the animal and. And I'm not worried about those hunters, I'm worried about the aberrant situation, you know, somebody who's not paying attention, who. Doesn't recognize where they are or doesn't care, that's sort of what bugs me with all of the additional activity we've had, now, you know, if it's in the. Sort of the western portion or, you know, there's nothing happening out there, although you're, you're encountering, you know, campsites, so it. You know, a, a sort of blanket permission wor- worries me a little bit because, um. It's, the situation there is different from what I think it was. Even just a couple of years ago and certainly through, you know, your lifetime of hunting up there. Um, so those are concerns that I'm trying to weigh, but I appreciate your, your comments.
Oh, I understand and respect the fact that. Times have changed, but at the same time. I'm worried about that if I. Am fortunate enough to. Strike an animal and he goes running that way. I don't want. Me, I'm just painting the worst picture.
Yeah.
He drops on the soccer field or she drops on a soccer field and I come walking out of the woods. I mean, I'm painting the worst picture right there. And it could happen. So I, you know, I'm not. I mean, it's nine times out of ten, that's not gonna happen. I probably shouldn't have even brought it up, but I'm painting the worst case scenario. But I'm hunting about five hundred yards away, but deer can run a long way.
Ben.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just don't know the answer to this, but like what's what's the policy, for example, with crossbow hunting in Hubbard Park?
So I can't, I don't have a perfect answer to your question, but I have been reading the ordinance lately about this because I did have a constituent come and ask me questions about this. Um, and the the ordinance is very specific about different kinds of firearms and then it just says. Bow and doesn't it doesn't. Recognize that there's a difference between, you know, this kind of bow and arrow and a crossbow or the giant super high powered. Crossbow with the scope that can go like, you know, three hundred, three thousand feet or something like that. Um, so. So I think it's, I don't think it's for tonight. But I think it would be great to take a little closer look at that and just get a little bit clearer about how to ensure safety with bow hunting. And I'm confident we can figure out a way to do it and, um, I I think, you know. People being able to hunt in the places they have hunted traditionally sounds great to me and you know, the worst case scenario is. The arrow goes astray and kills a person and we don't want that to happen. And it has nothing to do with your skill or your intentions, right? But somebody could do that. And so we just want to make sure that. And I think that the ordinance pretty much says, says something about you can't. Can't use a bow for hunting without. Taking proper safety precautions or something like that is this sort of vague thing that says you have to be safe. So I think that gives us, um, some protection at this point. And I think, you know, you're an example of a hunter who takes that seriously and thinks about what that means. So for another time, we might want to kind of clear that up, but I think for now that we could, um. I don't see a problem with granting permission for hunting in the same way as been done in the past, unless something else has changed, but I'm not taking into consideration.
And I see a couple of members of the public, Walton.
Um, I'm actually the other hunter that Maurice was talking about. We met up there about five years.
Oh, wow.
Okay, so my name is Walt Goodwin. I was born in Montpelier and I lived here for twenty seven years. Uh, I currently live in Berlin. I've been hunting the elk property for probably fifty years now with no issue. When the elk property was sold to the city, I attended a council meeting.
Well, my channel.
Yeah, Walt, there's an issue with the audio. It's very hard to make out what you're saying.
Yeah, is that better?
No, I don't think so.
I tried to say what I was gonna read, but Helen, you have that.
Yeah, I don't know what's going.
Is that better?
We'll try it and see.
Is that better?
Yeah. I have a suggestion. Um. We've got a phone number where you can call in and that might be, uh, might work better. So you know what that number is? We're gonna tell you that number in just a second.
Okay. I'm ready.
So the number is, if you're ready, Walt, um. Okay, so here we go. So I'm just gonna go with the first number that's on the agenda. So it's a one, three, zero, one. Seven, one, five, eight, five, nine, two. Yeah, thanks, Steve. And then once you're in, I can give you the meeting ID and the passcode.
Okay.
And then you'll also want to mute your computer's microphone.
Okay. So Walt, if you can still hear me, the meeting ID is eight, four, zero. Eight, zero, five, six, four, five, zero, two. And then the passcode is zero, one, four, seven, three, three. And a pound sign after the code.
I I didn't get that. Can you give me that again?
Do you need the phone number, Walt, or do you need the?
I got the phone number. I just.
Okay. Okay, so the the meeting ID is eight, four, zero. Eight, zero, five, six, four, five, zero, two, and the passcode is zero, one, four, seven, three, three. Followed by the pound sign.
I think we're still hearing your computer. Okay, now you've got yourself muted. Try talking. Not hearing anything. Yeah, while while you're working on that, Jocelyn, I'll call on you.
Um, I'm just mostly asking, um, and maybe this is an obvious. Answer, and I just don't have the knowledge about hunting that I need to know to ask this question. Um, but I'm assuming this hunting is not happening during school hours.
Okay, uh, Walt, do you or? Mr. Martin, no, do you?
I usually have like seven to ten, well, five to ten in the morning. Three to seven at night.
Okay, thanks. Do you have anything to add to that, Jocelyn?
Yeah, just, um, you know, my teachers were taking the kids exploring and they came back to tell me they found a tree stand and they were a little concerned. So I just wanted to. Make sure that I I just wanted to make sure that that we weren't gonna be worried about encountering somebody hunting. You know, between nine AM and one PM essentially.
Okay, Walt, how are we doing? I assume that if you connect, we'll see you. Your number come up on the screen as a participant. Oh, and I think we do.
Okay, I think I'm there.
Right, very good.
Okay.
Thank you for your persistence.
Yeah, thank you. So I'm the. Uh, hunter that Maurice was talking about that we met up there. And, uh. So my name is Walt Goodwin. I was born in Montpelier and I lived there for twenty seven years. I currently live in Berlin. I've been hunting the elk property for fifty years with no issues. When the elk's property was sold to the city. I attended a council meeting in September of two thousand twenty-two. And was granted permission to keep hunting on the property. I only hunt with a bow. At the elk's and I would never bring a rifle or any other firearm on the property. It's also against the law to shoot a rifle in city limits. When I'm hunting, I park over by the maintenance shed and I walk into the woods there. I don't hunt out in the open and I stay far away from people. In the last three years, I haven't seen any hunters or walkers in the woods where I hunt. I've only seen one other bow hunter on the property and that was about five years ago. And he's at your meeting today. So in two thousand twenty-six, there's gonna be some new hunting laws. One of which is the city of Montpelier will be a special archery zone. Where you can bow hunt deer in an early season. Which is two weeks prior to the regular archery season. That starts in October. Fish, fish and wildlife is allowing the special archery season. Because the deer population in Montpelier has become too high. And in closing here, I hope you take bow hunting into consideration when deciding whether to allow. Us bow hunters to continue hunting the property.
All right, thank you. Adrian.
I'm just wondering if we if we should consider like a time just to now that we have a daycare center up there. I mean, I'm. Very pro hunting deer because they eat my whole garden. So, um, thank you for controlling the deer population in Montpelier. They don't have any other predators. So I think. Uh, we should, I just want to talk about that. So she said between nine and one, they go out and explore in the land. They go do, you know. Walk the nature and that's different than from what it's been in the past because we have children walking up there and it's intentional that they're in nature. So I don't know if we just want to, you know, exclude those hours between nine and one and Jocelyn, if you wanted to confirm that was the right amount, but. That feels like. More comfortable.
I see someone's hand thumb floating up. Excellent. Um. So does someone? Want to make a motion?
I think that a couple more people, Jack.
Okay. I'm not seeing who they are, but Elena Augustus and. You've already spoken. Do you have anything to add to what you said before?
Uh, not so much.
Maybe you talked about dogs before.
I was talking about dogs before, yes. I just, I have a question. Um, and and it's both maybe to piggyback on what Adrian just asked and what Jocelyn asked. But, uh, I have kids who hunted, raised, we were, they were raised in a rural area, so I appreciate. The culture. But my question is, is the city council giving permission to two specific hunters? Or is this going to be opened up? To anybody to hunt on the land?
I would say if there's a motion to allow bow hunting on the property, it would not be limited to the two people who. Happened to be at tonight's meeting.
Okay, then I guess my follow up question to that is that we had the discussion about dogs on leashes. Uh, and a concern about. How the public would feel about leashing their dogs in that area and the safety of children. My understanding with hunting is there is no such thing as limiting the hours, although. Um, I guess you could certainly try to do that. So. How does the city plan to enforce or is that simply left up to the wardens to enforce hunting? In that area?
Well, Councilor Gill suggested that she would be willing to allow hunting, but not during the, but. Only during certain hours. And I think if we grant permission during that period, then. That's probably when they're allowed to do it.
Great. And I and I'm sorry, could you clarify who would enforce that?
Well, if if they're, uh, if they're doing something that they're not allowed to do on the property. At that time, then they could, we could call the police. Someone who observes that could call the police. Yes, sir.
True hunters are gonna appreciate that they're even hunting there at all. They're gonna self-police. A gentleman like myself, if we meet anyone else out there. We're gonna talk to them. We're Montpelier taxpayers, first of all. And if the person is has no association whatsoever with this area, they shouldn't be there and you know. Outdoors people. Take care of the outdoors and. Don't get me wrong, we don't go around being policemen in the woods. But we're caretakers of of nature and what's right. And we've got a beautiful piece of property there that needs to be taken care of properly. Both by the people that use it, the dogs that use it. And animals and hunters. And I think that all you have to do is. Be reasonable and just say, okay, let's let's have windows. But we should also let dog owners know too. Don't go sending them fricking through the woods without at least some color on. Not that we're gonna shoot it anyways because it's running so fast. But there's nothing worse than to get scared half wits when you're sitting in a tree stand and someone's flying by you and you didn't see it. So if we have responsible dog owners. Ethical hunters. Create facilities out there for children. We should all be able to get along with soccer players, adults. And we just need guidance. That's all.
I also think that probably limiting it to bull hunting. Is already a more, uh. More select, uh, population. So. Well, I like the idea of a timeline, uh. As I think about dogs racing through the woods with owners racing after them. Uh, I wonder if we. Uh, I mean, can we keep track? I mean. We've had people request, you know, permission to hunt there. I don't think we demanded that, right? I mean, it's sort of. Voluntary. Can we? How on earth would it be to have people who wanted to hunt there? Ask for permission, then we'd at least know how many and who they are. Well, of the ones who asked, and we have the people who didn't and ran out anyway, but at least.
Yes, and post the whole property.
We probably have to post the property to do that. Deputy chief.
Mayor, I mean, all right, I have them all up there at least. Not a hundred percent certain. I haven't researched the hunting ordinance in a long time. Pretty certain they have to have landowner permission, which would be the city of Montpelier. I would caution you about just opening it up to everybody. Uh, because that kind of negates that part of the ordinance for the landowner permission. But a- as it is now. With landowner permission, there's only one other place in North Branch. That everyone knows that we're sleeping bones.
So what you think is that we should? Grant. The permission to specific people, not to.
I I wouldn't want to like say who gets it, but I wouldn't want everybody to come and ask the city for permission. That way we know who's out there. Who had permission and if they're not, if they don't have permission, it's a violation of fishing and game laws.
So the motion would be something like allow. Bow hunting to people who request permission from the city. Uh, and it's granted it. And do they come, do they come to you?
I have had people come to me, but in in years past, um, they've gone to the city manager.
Okay. So it sounds like it's current, that's currently required. Sounds like. Asking for landowner permission. But we want to reemphasize that, I guess. Yeah. And then. I guess we don't have to set up a process, but we need to know where to send people. Yeah.
From the city manager's office, I mean, that's going to take them plus.
Steve.
I didn't hear what Kelly just said.
She said we could send people to the city manager's office.
So I'm not sure. I think you should ask your council to figure out whether that applies to publicly owned lands. Whether that landowner permission may not. Be the same. On privately owned lands as publicly owned lands. It's really hard to. Ban people from publicly owned lands, even though when you try to, uh, I I think. The city wants. No trespass to a woman from the police department bathroom. Dubious legal grounds, very dubious legal ground. So I just think that. But keep in mind. This. There's can be some good cooperation around this temporary, but it is a temporary. It's a changing use. That property is changing into. Uh, a. Public housing. Might be a village, might not. Might be a suburb. There might be a multi-use path going out across into Sabans through the power line and. So the hunting. Uh, the areas where the deer. Winter or forage will will probably change, but. I I. I'm glad somebody else mentioned that rifles are already banned, so we're only talking about. Uh, I, I guess somebody could theoretically think they can hunt with a pistol, but. Uh, that's a whole nother story. But the kids' hours are not the only one, the dog walkers are, are gonna be concerned about hunting too, cause they, they don't wanna. Only walk their dogs in the protected, no hunting, you know, nine to one. Uh, so this is a really more complex, uh. I think if we. If we try to just create the impression that we're requiring permission from the city council or the city manager, uh. Somebody might challenge it. I just don't think we should bluff people, by the way that our police bluff people, you can't sleep on that public land, you can't sleep on that public land. This is not the, the proper way to manage public assets, just with bluffing and intimidation. So we need to be real clear on who does this apply, anybody can come shoot archery here, if so. We would have to, I think we would have to post it and say hunting only allowed during the hours that we created the window. And that would prohibit hours during the school, but do we, is it different on weekends? You know, is it different when there's soccer game? It's really complicated. So I'm just pointing out that. The, the dog walking off-leash in the remote areas. Is gonna conflict, is gonna spook the deer and it's gonna conflict with the hunters. I don't have a solution, I'm just thinking that we shouldn't, this isn't another thing we should do sloppy.
Thanks, Steve. All right. Okay, yeah, um, does anyone else have, have, does anyone have something they'd like to propose as a motion?
Right.
Yes.
Make a motion to authorize. Um, city manager or city staff to do it, should we just say. They're specifying in our motion, because we don't know the detail. Do you think it will be enough to move forward?
Uh, we could, we could ask the city manager to come back with, uh, with the policy in writing, I'd like to. Give her some guidance so she knows what we're asking her to do.
Okay, yeah, I will be more comfortable voting for that one.
Brett Carey.
I understand that, I'm sorry, what, what is the suggestion?
Um, I just said that, eh, um, instead of being very specific tonight about the motion, the time and everything. I said, can we authorize, uh, Kelly to come up, uh, some guidance and recommendations? What should we include in our motion? And I said, I will, and Jack said, yes, and I said, I will be more comfortable voting that motion instead of. Just like saying things that we don't know of the details tonight.
Can I just ask clarify, can I just ask some clarifying questions of like, my, am I understanding this correctly that like? Uh, what I heard from, um, Officer Maldon was people need to ask permission to hunt on the land.
They need my lawyer. I just wanna make one correction on that.
Arnie, Arnie, could you come up to the, might introduce yourself?
State of Vermont, Arnie McCallan Recreation Department Director. The state of Vermont, if you're hunting for youth hunting for that special weekend with, with mentorship or adults hunting with. Um, uh, seasoned hunters. There is hunting by permission only, you do have to ask for permission during the regular seasons, you don't have to ask landowner permission. Unless it's specifically posted. That's, that's in the state of Vermont law. So I just wanna make sure that at least that's clear. Um. So, and people have been hunting up there for years and I've been up there during the season and I haven't seen people, I'm not hunting myself up there. But we don't even know they're there, you know, they're out of the way. And just from a hunting experience, if there's kids around and dogs around, you're not gonna see deer, so you're leaving anyways. So, yeah, just, just to share that, you're smarter than that.
Yeah.
So folks, I'm open to suggestion. Um, I just feel like, um, whenever we're thinking. You know, we've gotten kind of into a habit of saying, well, let's ask the city staff to come back to us with a policy and. If we, if we don't give city staff some guidance on what we want the policy to say. Um, it makes it harder for them to do that. Jim.
I like the fact that she said some hours. Okay, no hunting in those hours, I think you would be fine with that, right? Um, but what Arnie says true, and I used to be a hunter, I'm not anymore, but. You're not gonna be where there's people, dogs or anything, because you know you're not gonna see anything, that's just really walking in the woods. So they're gonna look for people. Where nobody is so that that's where the deer go, because animals don't want, like he said, animals don't wanna be there, so. I say restrict those hours that she said the kids are out. And other than that, let's allow it. Um, I don't know if they're gonna be out in the winter time. You know, we, they go into December, we can ask her, is this a year-round thing?
Karen.
So it seems like. We, uh, hunting, if, if the land is not posted, people can hunt on it.
Yes.
As, as it stands now.
And it's serious rules to.
And so he would like to have some more restrictions, I would like to have some more restrictions than that. Uh, so can, does it make sense to address this in our policy that we were already talking about with the dogs and all, and the camping and everything? Can we, does it make sense logistically for us to put in a policy, say that, you know, hunting is only allowed between these certain hours? And legally, can we do that? Or do we actually have to post the, the property? That's what, I don't know. So I'd like to have an answer to that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think so, just to, by my, um. Mr. Merritt, so I don't know the answer to that, I mean, we can certainly find out and then just make sure that it's, it's legal, whichever way we go. Um, make sure that we're, it's reflective of the intent of council.
So you're gonna do some research and come back?
Yes.
All right, I think we're, I think where we're gonna get tonight. Uh, I don't think. Yeah, I think we're, we need to move on from here to the next item. But we've got, you've got some guidance and we're gonna have some research. And we go from there, and now it is eight forty-six, over sixteen minutes past our, uh, break time, so it's time for a break. We'll be back here at approximately eight fifty-six. To order. We are up to our second budget workshop on district heat and parking. Sarah, welcome. Thank you for being. Sarah, welcome. Thank you for being.
Get the losers out of the way.
I wouldn't call them losers per se. I wouldn't call them winners either, but.
So many opportunities.
Okay, so I'm Sarah LaCroy, the Finance Director, and we're on Budget Workshop number two. This one's devoted to parking in District Heat. And so I'll take you through a general review, just to base on the fund types we spoke about at the last workshop, and then I'll take you through the Parking Fund and the District Heat Fund. So here, just the general review for the Parking and District Heat Funds is that these are enterprise funds, and so they're used for activities that operate like a business, and we charge fees to recover costs for those as opposed to raising tax revenue. These budgets include both operating and capital budgets, or should include both operating and capital budgets, given how these funds are performing, the ability to fund capital at the moment is a bit less than, which is, you know, part of the problems of the things we need to discuss with these two funds. And then, again, just the revenue sources, like I said, parking permits, meter revenue, ticket revenue, capacity and energy charges, those are all fee-based, and then we could have grants in there, but at this time, we do not. And so now, I'll take you through the Parking Fund. And so, really, parking is a tool for economic vitality and not just about collecting revenue. Here, the purpose of a parking system is to support a vibrant and accessible downtown by ensuring convenient short-term parking for visitors, customers, and employees. We, as a city, seek a balance of availability, affordability, and sustainability that encourages folks to move on for additional economic activity, as well as there are financial benefits from a parking system that can be reinvested into the downtown parking system to support maintenance, infrastructure improvements, and enhance the overall downtown experience. So here, with our parking system, we roughly have a total of 554 managed spaces. All spaces are ParkMobile compatible, and there are three different payment options. You can pay with ParkMobile, you can pay at the meters, and you can pay at the kiosk. Here, you can see there's an outline of the locations, and then there is an interactive map on our website that I have linked here, just so that you can see what I'm sharing. But you get the idea. If you follow the link, there's an interactive map where you can see all of the spots, which is helpful if you're looking to do a bit more digging into the parking system. Here is just the standard map. It's not interactive, but I thought this would help paint the picture of parking locations in the downtown, just as we consider this topic and move through this presentation. So the Parking Fund budget, this is a slide you've seen before in the prior presentation with just the quick outline of what was in the 26th budget. I wanted to highlight that the revenue sources in that budget include $333,000 in meter ParkMobile revenue, $106,000 in permit revenue, $102,000 in tickets, and another $29,000 in employee parking fees. And so that is primarily how this Parking Fund is funded, is through these different revenues. I thought it was important to look at trends in both revenues and tickets. I felt that I should go back. Usually, I only do five years, but I thought it was important to take a look at pre-COVID levels as far as revenue and tickets are concerned. You can see, you know, back in 2019, the Parking Fund really reached its peak, and it was doing incredibly well enough so that it could start to build a fund balance that would allow for investment in the infrastructure and improvement of the lots. Unfortunately, with the pandemic and the loss of the state workers and, you know, doubled down by the flood, we've not seen a return in parking revenue. I do think the state workers returning is optimistic and should drive revenue back up, so that's something to consider. And along with the downtrend in revenue overall, you can see, you know, there's a direct correlation in lack of parking tickets too that also brings that revenue down. Here, you can see in 2019, we were issuing about 13,000 tickets. 2025, we were, excuse me, year-to-date, that's an older total from when I gave a similar parking memo towards the end of '25, but you can see that, you know, we're significantly lower than we once were in ticket revenue. So again, you know, revenue shortfalls and fixed costs still below pre-COVID levels. We have a lot of fixed costs related to maintenance and leases. The Parking Fund operated at a small deficit in 2024, but that was only because we were able to allocate $215,000 of the Budget Adjustment Act money to that, and 2025 is looking at about a $216,000 loss again. And so, that'll be a direct hit to fund balance, and we'll take away from capital reserves and our ability to reinvest in the infrastructure we have. And so, right now, if this structural imbalance persists without intervention, you know, we'll continue to see a decline in the Parking Fund, and eventually, we'll have to make some hard decisions about what parking looks like for the city.
I don't know. Just on the capital reserves, are those segregated for the Parking Fund, or are those general capital reserves?
No, so any parking revenue stays in the Parking Fund. So, in excess of parking revenue would build the Parking Fund balance and be specific for reinvestment in parking capital infrastructure, just based on this source of revenue.
Thank you.
So, another thing to consider as part of the Parking Fund is the enforcement staffing. The current staffing has one full-time enforcement officer, one partial support position, and then the Deputy Police Chief is funded by the Parking Fund. This is because both police and dispatch spend a significant amount of time related to parking, and instead of allocating a small portion of each employee that's in dispatch and parking to the Parking Fund, mathematically, it equates to the cost of the deputy chief. And so, that's how that's funded, and that keeps overtime allocations from hitting the Parking Fund that don't belong in the Parking Fund for officers, you know, through time. And so, in the '25 budget, we did reduce a part-time enforcement position, which you can see also in the reduction in tickets. And so, again, the impact from the enforcement staffing constraints really is, it is a small staff with limited enforcement capacity, reduced ticket volume, lower compliance and turnover, and, you know, these directly affect the revenue and the system effectiveness. And right now, without a ton of people in the downtown parking, aside from the lower revenue, you know, there are a ton of issues with turnover, just from my own personal visual perspective. But if, when the state does return, I expect that we would need to see more turnover with additional people in the downtown. And so, there are just things to consider as we look forward in the Parking Fund. Is it more staff? Is it less staff? And where do we want to head here?
Can we, do you have kind of a percentage figure of the actual tickets given and how much is paid?
I don't, and I can look into that if that would be helpful.
Well, I'm just wondering if, you know, that 80% of the tickets given is paid, and do we count it as ticket, the income as tickets given or tickets actually got paid?
We would need to do an adjustment at the end of the year to recognize revenue. And so I would expect the tickets that are unpaid would be deferred into a future year when they are paid. And if they're not paid, you know, there is the option to turn them over to collections.
All right. Okay, thank you.
And so, I mentioned the state workforce return a few times. Hybrid work significantly reduced the weekday parking demand, you know, when COVID happened, beginning in December of this year. Employees will return to work in the office three days per week. I think that this change will increase our weekday parking demand, especially in the poor areas, boost permit and hourly usage, and improve turnover and revenue recovery. I do want to make sure we're monitoring demand trends, reassessing permit allocations and pricing, and ensuring enforcement capacity aligns with that increased activity. But I do think the return of state workers presents a great opportunity to help stabilize and grow the parking revenue and the fund itself. And so, that is a positive, and I know I've not given very many of those. So this slide is a lot, and I'll share this presentation with you. But I wanted to make sure we discussed the parking lot leases and did an evaluation of those. We have two big leases in the Parking Fund. You can see the lease periods, rates, the amount of property tax that the city pays, termination clauses, options to purchase, city's responsibility, and so you. At one point, you know, we think as a policy decision, we were discussing, you know, whether or not to let a lot go. And I think with the return of the state employees, you know, we should consider heavily what that looks like and take some time to assess, you know, if parking revenue does return towards pre-pandemic levels, what that looks like. And I just wanted to make sure we take all things into consideration as far as parking policy is concerned while we think about the budget this year and whether we hold on to these leases and what steps we take next. And so here's just a snippet from the website of our parking rates. They are quite low. And so, one of the questions to pose is, should we review parking rates and, you know, what that looks like and how we accept fees? Do we switch to ParkMobile entirely? Do we keep on-street and kiosk? You know, there are many things to consider, but I don't believe parking rates have been adjusted in quite some time. And so I just wanted to draw attention to these, so that budget consideration is if we should be reevaluating Parking Fund rates.
Sarah, have we compared the rates we're charging to other municipalities, Berry, Waterbury, Burlington?
Yes, I know that Chief Nordson has a list. I don't have that handy with me, but we've talked about the Parking Fund and how to help boost revenue and follow parking policy and be there to do what that's truly meant. Because, right, this isn't a revenue generator, but if we are going to do parking, we've got to do parking. And so, one of the things to consider is raising rates to help offset costs and do the repairs to the lots that are desperately needed.
Just real quick, though, thinking about like the return of state workers, and we want to really be inviting them to come back downtown and like, you know, meeting them year one with an increase in rates, you know?
They'll be parking in the state lots. It'll be pushing other folks out of places they maybe should have not been parking and force them back onto the street. I don't expect this would impact state workers. They'll be in state lots. And so then, policy options to consider. In the memo I provided a while back, you know, there were several options, like I mentioned, ParkMobile only, demand-based pricing, hybrid systems, lease review, or free parking, and no Parking Fund at all. And so, I, you know, those are just things to consider as we head into budget season because they will have an impact on if we're budgeting for additional staff or tech or, you know, whatever that goal and alignment might be for our parking policy and what that looks like.
Sarah, I feel like.
Just a real quick question about the ParkMobile and how tickets are written with that system? How's enforcement work with that?
Have them up here, please. So, when the service officers are walking around, they have, we call it a game boy. It's electronically based. It's hooked to the internet. They refresh, and they can, they can tell if somebody's paid to ParkMobile by their license plate. The only issue is sometimes people will pick a wrong zone, and we get those appeals all the time, and, you know, we usually accept their appeals, but it's pretty effective. I can tell you that the kiosks are really aged, and they're hard to maintain, and then the meters as well are hard to maintain.
I use ParkMobile. It is very, very easy to use, so I really like using it. But recently, they changed their system. Now, it doesn't allow us to put the numbers of the parking. It just shows us the closest one that, yeah, that's also, I don't know how it will affect the appeals because I cannot really put the exact number. I have to choose whatever ParkMobile tells me to choose, the closest one. Thank you.
I don't actually write the tickets, so I'm not, I'm not really familiar with how ParkMobile works, other than I do see all the appeals. But I haven't seen very many issues with ParkMobile.
I was just asking if there's any.
Sorry, I was asking because I was wondering if there's any advantage. Do we get more tickets issued if we use ParkMobile or meters, or is there, you know, is there a difference there? How do we get more tickets?
I think four tickets is more people being out and doing enforcement. I don't think ParkMobile will drive tickets. You know, it's just one of those things where I was thinking ParkMobile only would actually be less staff because there wouldn't have to be somebody going out to collect the meters and maintain the meters. And, you know, so there are advantages and disadvantages to all options, and, you know, we want to make sure it's equitable and that everybody has access to parking.
This is only peripherally related, but it is related to parking, right? Because I've seen some notes in FrontForge forum recently about people parking on Berry Street in the designated bike lane. And when I was driving through there tonight, I think there are still parking meters on those spaces that are in the bike lane, and I think that's probably sending the wrong signal to people.
We can certainly address that.
That was a question. This might be very silly, but what is the kiosk parking?
On Stone Cutter Way, there's an actual kiosk.
They're like a vending machine.
Like a vending machine. You type in your license plate number.
I think I've ever used.
Yeah, there, they, there's a lot of maintenance issues for those. We've actually had a couple.
Yeah, I think we decommissioned about five because they were flood damaged and didn't return those. And I don't think we've seen, can't say we've not seen a drop in revenue, but people are regularly using ParkMobile and the ParkMobile all the time.
Do they use the kiosks?
They still, people do still use the kiosk. I think people are drawn more towards ParkMobile because, you know, if you put in two hours, you know, on your phone, it'll alert you at 15 minutes left on your parking, so you can, oh, I'm not quite done my appointment at DMV. I can, I can add, you know, another 15 minutes or.
One more question. So how many kiosks do we have? Sorry, I'm just, I'm going with this.
I think we have three, but I'm not 100% certain. I think there's two on, I think there's two on Stone Cutters and one on, in Lantern Lot. We did, we used to have, we had them in 60 State Street Lot that got, that was flooded and removed. I believe we had one other.
Okay, so I figured we could take a break at this point. You've been asking questions throughout, though. Before I transition into District Heat, you know, just as we built the '27 budget, I just wanted to mention things to consider. Rate review, is current enforcement sufficient? Are lease lots still needed? Should we move to ParkMobile only? How do we ensure equity and accessibility, and how do we fund the parking lot repairs and maintenance? And again, I do think the return of state workers will be positive for the Parking Fund, and I plan to keep an eye on that and monitor usage and trends to see, you know, hopefully, we'll have a better idea. You know, it won't be until after budget season, unfortunately, when we have that idea. But I do think it's positive, and I don't want to be short-sighted with the Parking Fund and really consider the policy behind it.
Jim.
When you say our lease lots still needed, I mean, don't we have contracts on them?
Well, so that's the question, right? So there are clauses within them that allow for termination with a certain amount of time in advance. And so, you know, and I believe the Hany Lot comes up for discussion in 2026. And so that's, you know, this is an important conversation to have because as we head towards that, that's another big conversation.
I was thinking more of the Jacobs Law.
Yeah, that one.
I think that one's pretty locked in, the 2088.
Nine-month advance written notice.
Nine months. Who has the option? Do they have the option of saying yes or no?
Right, based on what I pulled from that lease, the city is required to provide nine months' advance written notice if payments are not approved by City Council in the annual budget.
So March rolls around, and we decide we're going to save. So March rolls around and we decide we're gonna save $42,000.
Plus 72 in property taxes.
Uh, if we're gonna, we're gonna save roughly $50,000 by not appropriating that money, then nine months later, the the lease goes away.
That was 24,000 in my day back then, that's how much it's risen.
I think I just want to understand, like, for for like the parking lot lease and like the park, Park Mobile and getting rid of the kiosk, like, I don't even know what it means to get rid of the parking lot lease. Maybe I'm just not very smart, but like, if we don't have this parking lot lease, like, what does that mean? Like, we just don't own a parking lot?
Uh, yeah, I mean, so what that would mean is we we wouldn't have ownership of that parking lot. And so they could charge for parking in that lot if they wish to.
Oh, so we're not getting it.
We would not get the revenue, um, it would not be a city law, right? So we would be saving, you know, $50,000, um, but we also wouldn't have revenue. And so, you know, right now, the revenue, best guess, based on the fund's performance, is not exceeding the lot lease. Uh, however, if parking resumes and we've gotten rid of that lease law and then don't have the law and can't manage, you know, there are big things to consider as we move ahead as parking policy is concerned.
And if you had a private entity charging whatever rates they wanted on that lot, they could be considerably higher. Like, you can see that in Waterbury, actually, there's some privately owned lots in downtown that are pretty expensive.
It would be kind of like the city center building parking ramp, which used to be public and now is not, and you can only park there with a permit. Or like the way you you go pulling it up and back of uh Positive Pie to pick up your pizza. Well, you wouldn't have that option.
That's very helpful, thank you.
Yes, chief.
That's right, we we did kind of go through this um with Capital Plaza. We used to lease a section of that parking lot, um, and we used to regularly write tickets in there. And uh, we no longer lease that, and Capital Plaza now charges people parking there. I'm not sure what the rate is, but.
And if you're staying there, you get free parking presumably, but.
Not parking lots are always empty. Like, what's, why is that? Because it's so expensive?
And also, Capital Plaza, uh, but just if you use their facilities, you don't pay parking.
Yeah.
So they just validate your ticket. So I don't think they are making that much money from parking because when you're in and using their hotel or restaurant, when they validate your parking, you don't pay anything.
My my hunch is that the lack of parking in the downtown leaves plenty of available on-street parking, which would be, my guess, is cheaper than Plaza law parking. Um, it's just taking a stab at them.
Is is the um Jacobs Lot still have a lot of permits issued for their parking?
There there is a section on on the back toward the river that is is permit only. Right, and there's also, I believe, 18 spaces that are dedicated for French block.
Okay.
When when that downstream project.
That changed since my time, yeah.
Two handicap and 16 additional parking spaces.
And um, are we paying for those spaces? Or does uh Downstreet pay for them because they have a landlord or, you know?
Downstreet is, I I thought I just read somewhere that it's 15.
Yeah, it's right at the bottom here, they pay for these spaces.
Okay, gotcha. Okay.
Anything else on parking? Uh, you know, I don't really expect any decisions tonight, right? But when we come, I wanted to make sure we were all informed on the same page that when we come back and talk about this, when it's really time to do the budget build, you know, we've got this, it's that story.
I see we have one, at at least one comment from the public, might as well get it in if it's about parking right before we finish up parking and move to the next item. So Steve, why don't you come on up?
Just a couple of things, there there is a kiosk behind the drawing board. There's a kiosk over behind Walgreens, the back corner of Walgreens. That one got ran over recently. Somebody jumped the steel, pushed it, the car ended up perched on the thing, but took out the kiosk. The Park Mobile is not for folks that don't have, aren't hassle with their cell phones, uh, or don't have the app or don't, you know? There's a draw, I talked to a lot of folks that are feeding meters and they really appreciate that our weekends are free and that they can put quarters in, because there's a whole lot of people that you would be, you discriminate against. Right here on Berry Street, rather than maintain the meters because the meter got rusted and fell off, it's like Park Mobile only. I'm not sure that's good policy, you know, to basically, uh, if either we're gonna get rid of all the meters or we're. But if we do get out of the Jacobs Lot, um, we wouldn't have to pay it. But it's gonna be an expensive paving job. Uh, we would lose the revenue from Downstreet, Jacobs would start getting that revenue. But uh, in light of the governor's executive order on housing, as the assessment of all the state properties, if we're gonna be talking or thinking about building housing along the river, maybe above tho- some of those parking lots, uh, maybe it's time for a full parking, in-depth parking study, who's making money where? How many spaces are there? How many would be needed under certain housing scenarios? Kind of really mapping out the whole economics, both geographic and cash economics of parking. It would be good to start that now so that we're, we know what we're negotiating with the state if we want some of that riverfront land for housing and parking. Um, but Jacobs Lot needs attention, even if we kick it back to Jacobs to get that attention. Uh, but that's, that's all I have, thanks.
Thanks, Steve. Yeah, we used to have a parking committee and that was many years ago, but.
I sat on it, I formed it, sell, sell and then carry.
Yeah, there is, there is a Park Mobile on which areas are used and which are not, what we do.
Less so on the meters, uh, obviously, but from Park Mobile, I can um run reports about different zones and usage.
And are there areas that are underused?
I I think, I think most areas are underused right now. Um, so I think that's hard.
Oh, so yeah, how far back does it go? It doesn't go that far back, does it?
Um, I'm not sure how long we've been using Park Mobile, it predates me. Um, so I, it probably goes back to five years, it would take quite that long.
Oh, so, yeah, so we don't really have a good way to gauge it yet.
Not, not to compare back to pre pandemic levels, definitely not.
Good, thanks.
Very.
I I think this is a good opportunity for us to be thinking about what we're actually trying to accomplish with parking in the city rather than approaching it from how much it costs and figuring out how to make the numbers balance. But to first identify what we're trying to do, which I think is, I mean, that was what we have to identify. Are we trying to make sure that there's sufficient turnover for businesses? Or are we just, we're trying to make sure that there's parking and it's a, you know, free for all, whatever? But but if we figure out what it is we're trying to accomplish, then then we figure out how to do that. So maybe that free parking is the way to go. I don't, I'm not saying that, I don't know, I don't know how it works. But but it's, you know, to start from that, like, first, what are we trying to do? And get really clear about that, and then that will help inform how, what we're gonna pay, how much we're gonna pay, and how we're gonna raise revenue for it.
That's I, you know, I I tried to frame this conversation from the parking policy side and less about, you know, costs and and whatnot, because I do think the why is really important.
And also, Park Mobile um is 15, 15 cents more expensive than the normal parking. So if you are planning to do some changes in the P, we can either increase normal like um parking things to the same rate to the parking, uh, Park Mobile or vice versa, because it is more expensive than the.
Yeah, the the additional fee related to Park Mobile is because the user um is responsible for the fee for the Park Mobile platform, service itself, if you don't, um, you know, paying that fee. And so that's also a policy decision um to consider. But I, you know, I do think most places do pass on that fee to the end user as opposed to, you know, eating that themselves.
Then I um, I just want to echo Carrie on terms of like the why here. I mean, as as you kind of said at the beginning of your presentation, is is to turn over the spaces, right? To support downtown businesses, that's right? We're not like doing the parking thing just to maintain parking, a parking department, right? And so I guess what I wonder, Sarah, is like, do we have, do you have any information or expertise? Or is there a way we could gather, like, what is the ideal rate of turnover? Right, and how how, you know, based on the Park Mobile data, like, how are we doing, right? Do we want to see more turnover? Do we know that? Why? You know, like, I just wonder, I'm sure there's all kinds of studies out there, right? About like the optimal amount of parking turnover for a downtown of our size. And I just wonder if we've been able to look at that or if we could look at that.
I do think the planning department has looked at that in the past. I think that they also, you know, are occasionally going out and monitoring uh parking turnover and what that looks like. Um, and so we can follow up with them to see what that that is. It's not really my area of expertise, but.
No, but I mean, even just like, maybe just like, I I suspect somebody like Main Street America, right? Would probably have information on like, what is your ideal kind of turnover rate? And then we could just cross-reference it with the data that we are collecting, you know, maybe, and then I think pull levers depending on that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Um, I'm remembering what I thought about last time when we talked about parking, it's coming back to my brain. Um, I think a part, an important part of this problem that we're trying to solve is talking to the downtown businesses because I know that a lot of the the workers use those spots and that doesn't help with turnover. And so I think for us to think about, you know, the downtown businesses, the folks that work in the downtown, like Positive Pie, um, I mean, any business, so was there an opportunity to, um, you know, have a employee parking lot to allow, you know, visitors to come and park in those spots downtown? So we do have that turnover. But it might be worth talking to Montpelier Live or some of the downtown businesses to find out what their current parking behavior is and see if there's any, maybe that's not the current state, maybe I'm making this up, but I feel like someone did tell me this. Um, but that could be part of this equation to kind of relocate some of the employees so that we open up those spots also.
Bill.
Yeah, uh, last time we were uh talking about this downtown businesses, I think uh suggest either free parking or two-hour parking, so it will help um their um business when people come here and do business. But there's a um huge issue about employee parking because they mentioned that they cannot find people to work here because of the parking um situation, because it is very expensive. And even if they are using some specific lots all day, they cannot afford it in the end because they are not being paid that much, um, so.
And one other thing, um, which, if we're not, if we were not concerned about revenue, and if we were only concerned about turnover, we could get rid of the meters and just uh chalk tires the way they do in some locations. Now, that still requires paying someone to go around to chalk them up tires and then go around to issue the tickets of the park if the person isn't uh, is still parked there, but that is an alternative strategy. Uh, and if we're not making that much money from the meters and we are paying for the meters and for the service, who knows? Elena Gustafson.
Hi, thank you, uh, Elena Gustafson. I am on Westwood Avenue, but I'm also a business owner in downtown. Um, I would uh encourage the city council to engage the Montpelier Business Association uh as well as Montpelier Alive because we do have pretty strong thoughts and opinions about how uh parking should be handled. Um, I can tell you that we would not advocate free parking downtown. Uh, and that anecdotally, I can tell you uh from talking with uh other business owners in the area uh that we are concerned about, um, folks, residents and employees who park in those prime spots. Um, and they park there all day because it is cheaper for them to get a ticket than it is for them to pay for a permit. And I think that there is a way for both our businesses to work with the city to help alleviate the um pressure, because it is absolutely true, Pollan is correct, in that most of us are solopreneurs or we have a limited uh number of staff. We can only contribute so much in terms of benefits and salaries. But I think that there is a way that we could work with the city and even where parking can be somewhat um of a benefit or somewhat subsidized to help our staff um find parking. Uh, so I would just, I would encourage uh the council that there are creative ways to tackle this. And I would also encourage the council to consider raising the rates uh as well as extending those rates through the weekend. Um, whereas free parking then becomes a really wonderful benefit to our locals during certain times of the year. Uh, but yet where we can still take advantage of the potential revenue that folks from out of town bring with them well, when they come to park in our downtown.
All right, Jim, you you get the last word.
Yeah, when I was on the parking committee, one of the things we did was we looked at where the spots were and the closer you were to the downtown, it was more expensive. The more it went away, it got cheaper. Because, and what we found out is what she says, if you do free, the workers, they want their horse close to the saloon. And so they're gonna bring, put their car, they're gonna park their car close to where they are. So when they get out, they're quicker to their car and they can go. When they come in, they can park right in front of the store. People are generally don't want to walk that far when they park their car where they go. So they're gonna, they're gonna go to the easiest spot and they will tie it up all day, we found that out. And so if you want to have turnover for businesses, you've got to have two hours or something like that. And uh, there, you know, a parking committee could really solve a lot of problems because they could look in it in depth. And that's what we did, and we actually had it during those years where we didn't lose money, we didn't gain money, but we didn't lose. We stayed on top of it.
Thanks, Jim. District Heat.
Awesome, oh wow, maybe awesome. Uh, so the District Heat Fund, uh, this I would expect will be a little bit quicker than parking. Um, District Heat Montpelier is a project between the city and the state, and it delivers local renewable thermal energy to the downtown, um, as well as it's the state central heating plant that we're purchasing um capacity and energy off of. And so we have 17 customers in the downtown that include municipalities, us, the school and other private properties. And so um, that's what comprises the District Heat Fund's customer base. And so here, again, this is the District Heat Fund budget from '26. You can see the revenues are charges for services, both capacity and energy. And then the expenses are broken down um by admin, energy operations, the state contract and the debt reserve. Um, and so here, I went through revenue types in the history. Um, the capacity charge covers essentially everything that is not energy. Uh, and I've got the proposed rate that you all recently approved in August. And um, what I thought was important here was really um to show just the trend in revenue um year over year. And and you can see the revenue's gone up and that's, you know, because it's associated with the costs that are going up. Um, this fund uh has some challenges, um, and and one of those is is the increasing costs um here. And I'll go into that in a minute. Um, so it's just an overview of expenditures. In the '26 budget, you can see the pie graph on the top right, um, debt, operating costs and wages and benefits. And you know, this fund is primarily the operating cost, uh, though there is debt associated with it. Um, and then the key cost drivers are the state contract, heating fuel, personnel, depreciation and debt service. And you can see the debt service is large and um, you know, depreciation is larger, uh, which I'll I'll go over in a minute um on a a slide about fund balance and um net income here. But you can see, I tried to break this uh graph on the left into operating costs, depreciation and wages and benefits. And so you can see that depreciation number is in the 315,000 range and um the debt number is in the 180,000 range. And so my favorite question came from Kurt in my interview, and it was about depreciation. And depreciation seems to be, um, you know, a tricky topic. But in best practices, you um would budget for both debt and depreciation in the enterprise fund. It helps. It helps you pay the debt and build a reserve. Um, if you can't do that, then you would budget for the higher of debt or depreciation. And here we budget for the lower number debt instead of depreciation. And that's because, um, just quite frankly, the user rate can't support budgeting for the, the higher value. It's just, it is not, um, sustainable for the customers to pass that additional cost on. And so you'll see in a later slide, um, where the fund operates at a loss. And this is because we just are, are just budgeting a deficit, um, because we can't do that to the rate payer at this time. Um, and so, you know, again, that is also a policy decision. We could increase rates, um, if the council so desired. Um, but, you know, we've been trying to be fair to the customers who are on board and, uh, the limited number of customers there are. And so, um, here you can see the debt service. It, uh, starts, I'm showing you, uh, the debt payments in, uh, twenty twenty six. And I take you all the way through twenty thirty nine when, um, the final debt payment will be made on, uh, twenty five year loan. Um, one of the biggest, and you can see the total debt remaining exclusive of the Vermont Economic Development Authority loan is one point nine three five. Um, so there's an additional seven hundred and fifty thousand not in that amount. And so the way that beat alone works is that we are making interest payments right now, now, but not principal payments because the fund is not cash flow positive. And so, um, that principle keeps being pushed and, and at this point, we are not making payments on that principal portion of that debt. Um, in addition, their contracts for customers go twenty years. And there is a piece of debt that goes for twenty five years. And so if customers jump off after year twenty, uh, between that beat alone and that other piece of debt, we have about one point three million in debt payments remaining. Um, so that is a conversation we will have to have, um, at future meetings about what to do about that. Um, you know, we do have about ten more years, um, on the contracts with customers. And so, um, depending what this looks like in the future, you know, we really need to plan heavily, heavily with five years remaining so that everybody has ample time, depending on what that looks like. If it's, we've added a bunch of customers and rates are more favorable. Or if it's, people are jumping off and we've got to talk about decommissioning the system and how we pay back this debt. And so there are larger conversations to be had outside of the budget season. Um, but I want to be transparent as we head into budget season about what this fund looks like and some of the challenges we're facing here. And so, um, the next slide is going to show you the annual operating loss. And it varies from two fifteen, um, down to about one twenty five. And, and so there are different swings in different years. Um, you know, twenty four was more favorable because we didn't invest in district heat because we were repairing from the flood. And so those expenses didn't come from that fund. Um, other years have been heavier because we've had to do capital improvements. And so, um, you really can see though, that, you know, we really are trending in the one twenty five to one fifty range. And that is the gap in budgeting for depreciation and debt, uh, which is why that's so important. And so right now, uh, we are operating at a loss and not funding for future capital improvements is really what that means. And so, uh, I could see the face you're making and I, I feel that, uh, Ben, because it just, it is um, unfortunate as we work to unwind and, and figure out how to move ahead here. And so, uh, again, challenges, very limited customer base, only seventeen customers, um, high fixed cost, aging infrastructure, operating in a loss and the debt I, uh, mentioned previously. And then we are, uh, working to add new customers. We are partnering with the state. They've offered to help support. There are potential grant opportunities that we could go in on with the state to help expand the system. Um, they've offered assistance with grant applications, further system evaluations and cost benefit analysis. So we, um, are as a team, Kelly, myself, Kurt and Chris Lumbras, really actively working, um, to try to, to figure out what's best for district heat as we move ahead and, and what the next ten years and future look like. Um, and so with that, just looking ahead for twenty seven, it continued focused on financial sustainability, customer expansion and system optimization, infrastructure resilient. And, you know, just the, the good environmental impact that this system offers, you know, are some of the benefits. But, you know, I, district heat, uh, is a tricky one. And, you know, we work, are working hard to figure out what the best path forward is.
Jim.
Sarah, how do we handle the state buildings that are on this?
The state building, so we.
I mean, not the state buildings, the city buildings. I'm sorry.
What do you mean? Like, we, we are a customer like anybody else, so.
So how do we handle that payment bit? We pay the re- regular rates?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, no city discount.
No city.
Uh, Fire PD and City Hall all pay their capacity charge and their share of the energy charge based on usage.
So are they gonna want to get off the system? I mean, are they losing money if they go to another system? Would they save money?
There are trade offs and it's a hard analysis to go, um, from oil costs to the cost of district heat. Um, with district heat, there's a lot less internal maintenance that, you know, we have to deal with on the day to day that are added costs that would factor into that calculation. Um, and so it's not as cut and dry as I'd like it to say yes or no. Um, and so, you know, there are costs you don't have when you're on district heat that you would if you were on something else. But, you know, it's hard.
Right, but they, I mean, we don't try solar or anything like that, so.
Yeah, like at this point, um, anybody who is in this contract is in this contract for twenty years.
Okay. Do you think the issue, is the issue that oil prices have never gotten high enough to make district heat a better deal?
I will.
That's, I know.
District heat is a bad deal, though I know there are many people who would disagree with me. Uh, you know, I, I think there are trade offs and I, you know, just, it is a numbers game. And so if we can find a way to get grant money, to invest in the system, to get new customers on that spread that capacity charge across, um, the board, because most of the people have gone in and done improvements to their system to be more efficient, to have less spikes, to have a more stable capacity charge. And so that we have capacity available and new customers would help. Not one new customer, several or a large new customer. And so that's why we're actively working with the state and trying to pursue grant funding to entice someone else, um, you know, to be on something, something large or multiple something so that, you know, this is a good thing, district heat. And if we can find a way to keep the customers we have, get more and extend past the twenty years, everybody wins. But if we can't find a way to bring rates down and add customers, uh, you know, we are in jeopardy of all the customers hopping off at the end. And, and there's a, a delta there where so many hop off and we just, we can't. Uh, because we wouldn't be able to pay for it, um, or the rates would be so high. And so, you know, people need adequate time to plan if they're going to be swapping out heating systems and moving to something new. Or, you know, if we've got to figure out how to recoup those debt payments that we will have to make and, and who pays for those. And so, you know, lots, lots of tough decisions to make.
Adrian Van Pellen.
Um, can you share what, like, the, uh, profile of a new customer would look like? Like, what does that mean? Like, what is a customer? Like, what is your requirements for a new customer?
Uh, best case, you're in a building that's already on the district heat loop and we just need to connect you to the district heat loop. That's a much more affordable connection than if we have to do, like, run a line down Elm Street and to connect more buildings. That's a more substantial costly project. And without, um, you know, grant funding, it's hard to burden the rest of the, the users with new line extension fees when their costs are already high. And so there's a, a fine balance about city funding, grant funding, incentivizing new customers, and then those customers having their own costs to connect to the system as well. Um, so it, best case, somebody's already on the loop, but, but, you know, anybody who's interested, you know, we are having conversations with and, and trying to rough up numbers to see if, if it makes sense to get on district heat.
Was there like a magic number you're trying to recruit customers to the system to say, we currently have seventeen, but we are really trying to aim for thirty?
Depends on the size of the building.
Okay.
Um, and the amount of capacity it takes and heat it draws, which would drive up, you know, if we've got a, a really large building on the system, um, compared to three small ones, right? Like, it, it just, it's, it's hard to tell, but really it's, it's the size and, um, usage that is impactful.
So what are the barriers to getting on district heat for some new customers? Like, why wouldn't they say, yes, this is great, I'm gonna sign on? Like, what are some of those barriers?
Cost.
To, oh, it's their cost.
To get on the system. To convert their building, to convert their building and to connect to the loop.
And, and so that's why you try to get grants to help subsidize that.
Yeah, to make it more enticing to get on the loop.
All right, I think I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Bella.
Yeah, my question will be similar. I was, um, wondering, uh, is the, are the customers like commercial, uh, buildings or like home owners, like individual? Is there any specific?
They're, they're, they're buildings in the downtown, so, uh, Union, Union, Vermont Mutual, Union, one of, one of the mutuals, sorry, Vermont Mutual. Uh, you know, I have the Everett Insurance Building, the Leo's Building is on it, uh, City Hall, Fire, um, PD are all on it. There's Christ Church, the library, uh, Bethany Church, I believe. So it's a mix, but it, it, you know, it runs, um, along. There's a specific loop that, that people.
So like, we can target businesses, right? Like nonprofits or like commercial, but it sounds like business buildings have this.
Yeah.
And second one, just so I saw your environmental impact, do we have environment tax? I'm not a pro-tax person, but I, uh, experienced like a couple of the towns in Vermont, they have environment tax.
Yeah, no, we don't.
Which, which like, any building or any business creates bad impacts on the environment, they have to pay tax.
Yeah.
Then it's kind of encourage them to use this kind of system. So they won't be paying the tax and they will also not destroy the environment.
The federal building's on the district.
Correct.
What happens if, uh, or it could be with any building? What if they sell the building and break the lease?
They're committed to district.
They're committed to district. So they'd have to pay out the total of the lease term?
Well, they're, they're on district heat until the lease term is up.
I guess what I'm saying is that building ownership changes, right?
They're still on district heat, paying. Both rate.
Okay, okay, great. And this cap, capital.
They cannot escape.
Capital Plaza's on district heat as well?
They are not on district.
They're not on.
They were, uh, at one point, part of the plan to be on district heat, which do think likely would have made a significant difference to the overall heating system, um, had they gotten on. Um, but I, I wasn't here back when that happened, um, but I, I do, they, they pulled out. And so, uh, you know, are not on the system, which then, you know, makes the system a lot, look a lot different.
And just last thing too, right? Like, just thinking about like flood resiliency, being on district heat is probably a much more flood resilient option for a downtown building owner than putting in your own new system.
Yeah, and, you know, it takes up a lot less space. We did have flood damage, um, to district heat, but it was because meters were in basements. Uh, not to the system itself. The heat plant was fine. We were able to serve heat to everyone. It was, um, fiber optic cables being pulled off of walls and, uh, meters that were underwater in basements. And so, um, when we went back through and it was about a three fifty to four hundred thousand dollar FEMA project to restore district heat. And all of those controls are elevated, um, following our standards. So I would expect, you know, in an equitable flood, those buildings would still be able to take heat, uh, some heating season with minor, minor, that's like. They have all, all of the state buildings are on district heat, not the city's version because we just buy capacity and they manage the plan.
Okay.
So those buildings are all on district heat.
Council members, any other questions? Steve.
Yeah, I've spoken about district, Steve Whitaker, spoken about district heat a number of times. I would encourage you to, to learn more about it, either individually or before the whole council. I think it'd be educational for the public who's, uh, paying this two hundred thousand dollar deficit, uh, to be informed about the economics of it. But Steve Ribellini has good firsthand experience. He connected his building at Fifteenth State and he's been victim of the capacity charge and the absurd economics of it. But I want to remind you, we put the sustainability coordinator position on the, on the budget to create that position. Their first and number one primary task was to make the district heat system in, run in the black. And instead it's turned into the handyman, property manager for everything else, taking that load off the city manager. City manager used to maintain contracts for all our repairs. And so basically we've delegated it down. We've got a whole new position for somebody who's not making the met district heat running. Two hundred thousand a year, I've said, stop the bleeding. But on the pro side, the places where you could, uh, connect would be the parking lot, connect new big, big customers would be the parking lots across from the transit center. If we could acquire those from the state, the, the ones along the river behind People's Bank and, right? That would be a place where we could put a big housing, you know, with, connected to district heat. And also the lot owned, or the combination of lots, Jacobs being the sticking point. But from the funeral home all the way over to St. Paul Street, that's owned by three parties that, well, four, counting the church. Church is willing, Haney's willing, Ribellini's willing, Jacobs is, uh, Jacobs. Uh, but that's a place where you could do dense infill housing. And there is a pipe already coming into the library, from the library into the driveway of Maggie's Bakery, which could connect on and district heat that. So without having to dig up Elm Street to try to heat that. But there is a capacity limit. We've only contracted for so much capacity. And I did some rough math when we were con- considering connecting the Elm Street downstreet properties. And that would almost use up the remaining capacity. I think I was told maybe we could contract with the state, renegotiate our contract for more of the capacity. It's not all allocated. So we might have to adjust our relationship with the state to have more capacity in order to market our, uh, potential customers to get this thing running in the black. But I got more, but that's, that's all you need for now.
Thanks, Steve. Elena.
Want to clarify any of that or we good?
Yeah, why don't you go, if you have an answer to some of that, that'd be.
Yeah, uh, so nobody is currently paying the deficit that district heat is running. That is not a charge that's passed on to anybody else at this time. Um, then, uh, the sustainability coordinator is actively part of the team pursuing new customers. Um, while he is, um, we had some big flood damage and so priorities have shifted. And he was a huge part of repairing district heat and our flood recovery. And it's still actively working with partners to, um, try to find new customers. And yes, there is additional capacity available to purchase from the state. Uh, we have been working with our own customers to find efficiencies in their system, which has freed up a ton of the capacity that they were using previously. So we do have a large chunk of capacity. Um, and if we were able to get new customers, I expect that the partnerships we built with the state, um, would allow us to purchase additional capacity to make this work. Um, and we do meet with, um, BGS quarterly to go over costs and financials and are actively working with them on the system and additional opportunities. So I just, you know, we are doing all of the things and, that we can and are, are really trying to figure out what's best here. Um, so, you know, and, and at this time, you know, nobody is paying for that deficit. Uh, what we will need to make decisions on is, is who pays back the debt if we can't, um, right side the, by the end of the, the term. Um, but that, that's just my.
Thanks, thanks, Sarah. Um, Elena.
Thank you. I'll try to make it quick and my questions actually are for Sarah. There's some clarifying questions. I, I am a, I benefit from the district heat as a tenant in one of Steve's buildings at Fifteenth State. And it's lovely. Um, but my question is, I guess what it comes down to, you, you said that the revenue, is there a? I guess what it comes down to, you, you said that the revenue, is there a, so I have three questions. Is there a base rate that those who are on the system pays? Is there then a usage rate on top of that? And are you taking into account or is there any concern around properties that are vacant or being used as Airbnbs? In regards to how that impacts the revenue for the district?
Yeah, so there are two rates. There's a capacity rate and that's essentially everything that is not the energy cost. Born by the fund. And so the way that works is we've done capacity studies that review. Each customer's usage and the way the agreement is written is that your capacity is based on your peak. Usage, your biggest draw on the system during that year or the last time we did the capacity study. And so we've done this multiple times now. And we can identify people who were high users and try to help them adjust their systems. But essentially that's, that is a fixed seven month payment based on. Prior capacity and and that's very clear and marked out. And then. Each person is also responsible for their actual energy usage on that system at a different rate. And that is metered and we build those monthly throughout the heating season. And then the third question, I apologize, I'm drawing a blank on here. Airbnbs, yes, so. Whether buildings are vacant or not, I mean, they may draw less heat. And so that that would impact us from a, we would pay less for heat because they would be using less and they would also pay less. So vacancies don't impact the the overall of the fund because of their energy usage. It would just be less and we would be being billed less from the state.
Thanks, Sarah. I think. This, this is. It's a very complicated thing. It's. People need to understand and so this is very, very good. Thanks.
Yeah, if any of you have additional questions, you know, where to find me in City Hall, happy to pick it all apart.
I feel like you say this every time you make a presentation, but it's like really excellent. Like, thank you for your work. It's very good.
I'll be honest, public speaking is my biggest fear and so I really, really appreciate the positive feedback. So, thank you.
Yeah, lean into it.
Well, you're, you're getting plenty of practice.
Thank you.
All right, items eleven and twelve. Special event policy review and parade and ordinance review. And where we left it last time was that. There were some comments. And editorial proposals from council members and. We're at the point now where we're. You want to decide whether this is ready to go to. To set a public hearing on the ordinance as drafted and. This could conceivably be pretty quick if people are satisfied with what, what's. What it's looking like now.
So please, questions? We do have members of the public safety team here to answer your questions. There are no additional. Documents in terms of background. We just included what was included in the last packet. However, you'll notice that the the policy has changed based on those comments. And so really, you know, just highlighting that there are some items in here that were made in terms of. Of clarity. But then, you know, we also did take a look at some of the definitions. So for instance, the public safety team is defined here. The other thing that I wanted to note in this policy that we did sort of include is monthly rely in their. For the permits. And so we found the. Suggested comments to be extremely helpful as we were looking at the policy as the public safety team. And so we incorporated those changes into the red line version that you have in your packet. And so if you have a specific question, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise. You know, the team is pretty happy with what this looks like. I also will know though that there is a portion within this policy if you should choose to waive. Any of the things you can do so. So that I can move on to the ordinance if you like. Okay, great.
When do we come? When do we comment on that? Yeah, I, you know, I think I really appreciate the changes that were made and like particularly around monthly alive. Thank you for that. You know. I, I still wonder unless I missed it, but like I, I wonder if there's a threshold that we could put in here that like if unless an event is a certain size. We don't charge for it because again, I still think it's three, it's three events that are, you know, the vast majority of the expense that has. Been seen and and then just looking and I really appreciated putting the other policies from the other communities in there and and saw that Burlington's is. If I understand it correctly, they're not charging unless it's an event of a thousand people and obviously their police force is much different in terms of size, but. I just wonder if there was more consideration given to that idea of like, you know, unless it's a certain threshold, not charging.
Well, Chief Libby, I can speak about.
Eric Libby, Fire Chief, I can speak to my experience in Burlington. Those larger events are typically in streets that aren't church street, right? So where the streets aren't closed down. City of Burlington doesn't have to do control. It doesn't take resources to close off the street for the natural church street. Battery park, City Hall Park, the waterfront typically are larger events and require city assets. And that's where they're seeing the fees associated with those events. Unfortunately, we don't have a.
Church street?
Church street that we could say everyone will. Parade or march on. So we do that, but. Use the DPW and law enforcement to close those, but doesn't have to.
Anybody else? I know you still.
I'm sorry, I still don't get it because I, I just feel like. I just, I, I'm sorry, but there's feels like there's really two issues, right? There's the capacity issue of do we have enough? Police or staff to keep these events safe? And then it's like what it's costing the city. In overtime or different time to have these events, right? And like, one of those feels easier to solve than the other, right? In terms of like. You know, the cost, but the staff capacity, like I don't know how you crack that nut. And so I guess I just feel like what we're really doing here is kind of. Saying, well, we really can't do as many events and we're going to put in a system that's going to. I mean, just discourage people from having an event and, you know, I just, I think we. I mean, if I'm mistaken, somebody tell me, but like, I think we need to really. Be transparent about what we're trying to do here and, you know, I, I've, as I've said, every time we've looked at this policy, I just. I, I feel like the events are like, and we all know this, I feel like, make the, our community wonderful. And so. Yeah, it's just that's, that's the thing. So I guess what I'm trying to say is like, if there's a way in which we can. You know. Solve this without really actively discouraging those smaller events that make monthly or special, I would really like to hear that.
I think we have someone who has. Would like to say something.
Kevin Holm, Mount here, please. I'll speak to both things, the, the capacity and, and our, and our goal is not to discourage events. It's, it's really to recover costs. You know, over the years and and budgets, we've, we've cut overtime, we've, and we're just. We're trying to recover our, our costs. If we're talking capacity, I'm at capacity just to run up the ships, let alone any of these events. And I'm not trying to be negative, but I have thirteen cops that are. I mean, we're at capacity without any of that. This, this last weekend, I had five people here for, for month, for the fall festival. You know, and that's a small event.
Yeah.
Or a medium event. I wasn't here for it, but. So, I mean, we're not, our goal is not to discourage any of these events because we know it's an economic driver, but. Over the years, you know, things have changed. Our, our budgets have changed. We've, you know, we had a lot of, a lot more built in overtime than, than we do. We do now, we're, we run it tight as. Tight as we can.
For DPW, I also just want to point out that. Smaller events, while they may not take a lot of staff resources, they could ask for lots of our equipment. Things that we would be supporting them in addition to that and we may not get those cones back. We may not get those barricades back. They could have volunteers that are willing to set up the whole thing. We give them two hundred cones. We don't get them back. That's a cost that we have to then replace. So I think. You know, we, we talked about this in depth as the committee, like should we waive small events? We kind of went back and forth and I mean, I think where we landed was that. We recognize the small events. We wanted to give you the opportunity to waive or reduce the fees at the council. Should someone want to come and support and speak to that? By all means, we can. You have the authority to waive them. We felt that it was a balance between providing equipment, personnel and. Just really. Registering that there's other things that are coming into each of these events, even the small ones that may not. Capture the personnel side, but may, I mean, I've had requests after hours on a Friday afternoon where I've had to turn around. Go back to the facility, unlock the facility, take out cones, put out barricades just so that they can have their event. This past weekend, we couldn't get any union people to even really to want to be on this event. We had to force two supervisors. And someone that was on call for streets and we had one volunteer for the event. We had to have four people staff this event. It was twenty eight hours of overtime. For DPWs, just the DPW specifically, and that was a medium this fall event, so. I think it's tricky to say that this small event or this medium event should or should not have. Fees associated with it or it should be just waived because it's, you're trying to put everything into one bucket. But I think where we landed was just giving you guys the opportunity to waive them as what we felt was best.
I really appreciate that. Love you. Thank you.
Adrian, I think I saw your hand up. Is it still, still there? Okay, well, let me tell you what I think, Ben. I think we got a. A couple of alternatives. One is to say, just. Put this as it's drafted on for a public hearing and. And take public comment and. Move to amend it after the public hearing or move to amend it now and then put it in the public hearing the way. The way you want, but I suggest we put it on the public hearing the way it's drafted and go from there.
I agree. Thank you.
Adrian.
I agree with that. I ever just like for the list of, I think I said this last time, but I'll repeat it. The list of events in twenty twenty five and maybe twenty twenty four, if there's any differences to. Reach out to those folks and invite them to the public hearing. Like specifically, you probably have the contact information. And affirmance.
We have all.
Yes, but I would like for them to be, send an email or having a public hearing. We want to hear from you because. That's the point of the public hearing.
So we will certainly try to do that. It will be sort of relying on your staff to do that and. Sort of the capacity and so I'm going to try to be better about registering where there are instances where we are a little limited. And so we will try our best. Do that.
I mean, I know a lot of these folks, I will also reach out to them, but if any other counselors or people, I think we can all. Maybe divide and conquer and just send them an invitation and, you know, help. Supplement those staff's capacity and.
Thank you.
I'm more than happy to do that.
So does somebody want to make that motion? Motion would be to schedule. The ordinance as drafted for the first public hearing.
Just to clarify, would it be the policy of the ordinance or both?
Probably both.
I'll, I'll try to be very specific in my motion. I would move that we move forward with the. Policy and geez, now I'm messing it all up because I'm nervous about getting it right. What do I need to do?
Ordinance change. We don't need a public hearing on the policy.
Correct.
We don't, but we, we. Could have a hearing just to be consistent.
Kind of makes sense for them to go together.
Okay. So I'll try this. So I'm going to move that we schedule a public hearing. On the proposed ordinance change and the proposed policy change. For special events.
And we need to put the date in the motion, right?
At our next meeting or? Yeah, okay.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion or comments from the public? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right. Thanks, folks.
Thank you.
I think it was worthwhile taking it up last time and, and bringing it back. So, all right, we're up to. Item thirteen. Review of the. Proposed contract for Whitenburg. RFP.
For the motion? Revision? Can we do, do this? Because we said the motion. Wasn't valid and you have to revise it, which means that. We cannot move forward, right? Well, there are two different things.
What I would say is that what happened earlier tonight is we didn't. Pass the minutes because there's a question about whether the minutes accurately liked. What happened, but we still have before us. A draft. Contract with Reidenberg and we could still. Take that up. And, and take action on.
Can we just get real clear on like, I'm not really understanding what happened, like this, the minutes. I thought that was referring to option four A. Related to the. Country Club Road infrastructure up to the road. If there's an issue about the Whitenburg contract, I'd like to know what, what it is we're talking about.
Issue was when the subcommittee, what, this is what I understand, this is what was emailed. When the subcommittee was formed, whether or not it was specifically tasked. To engage on the Whitenburg issue or whether. There, there was cross talk, so I interpreted the Whiteberg portion as part of the discussion that didn't. Alter the basis of motion that you had made, I believe.
But I didn't make the motion.
Or somebody I can check, okay. I just remember you.
No one made the motion. I said, for clarity.
That is correct.
Yeah, and I.
My point is simply that there was, once an initial motion was made, it was one of their situations where there was. And the motion will include this, does the motion include that? I interpreted that as. As discussion of what the motion would allow and not that people were actually literally changing the motion. As a matter of process. So that's the question that has come in play is my interpretation for it. Or did that actually, did the cross talk actually change the underlying motion?
Ben, did that answer your question?
Yeah, I would just like to, Jim, if I can, just real quick, just say, like, I feel, I mean, I watched that clip, right? And I specifically clarified, you know, asked. For clarification. Is this that we're going to be working with Whitenburg at the subcommittee? And I believe I heard two counselor, or Jack, I think you said yes, and I, and I thought you agreed. And then Adrian seconded.
I think, I think it was already clear though, but the question was, is this going to? Allow X? Is this going to do X? It wasn't, can the motion include X? So the problem I had was interpret whether this is cross talk and we're clarifying what the motion empowers. Or whether it's a specific task built into the motion. And that's where the conflict was and that's what I want to go back and look at.
So Jim and then Adrian.
What I think, we had somebody say we need to make clearer motions. What should have been done in that case, in my opinion, is always done in, in the past was. You asked if you could add an amendment to the motion and the person who made the motion accepts the amendment. That was not done. It was just a statement made, another person saying yes, nobody asked. I would like, said, I would like to make an amendment to the motion and the person who made the motion did not say I accept amendment. That's how it was always done that I remember and that's why it got confusing. You would have said, Ben, I'd like to make an amendment to your motion and Paylon accepted it. It would have been a lot clearer, but that's why we're in the mess.
Jim, have you watched it?
You did not say anything about amendment.
If you did, I apologize and I can fix it.
No, it's, it's not, I just think like, I, I'm, you know, Jim, from a point of process, you're probably right, but I have to say like, I'm, I'm pretty surprised really. Because it seemed crystal clear to me when, what the intention was and we voted for it unanimously.
The question is what the motion.
Yeah.
The attention, I'm telling you, I always do things by amendment. Do you accept amendment? Yes, I accept amendment and that's where I think when we heard somebody say you need to be clear, that's what they were talking about.
Adrian.
I'll just say that I think the motion, so the next morning, one, that was at eleven o'clock at night. And the next morning, someone said, oh, you guys are working with Whitenburg, and I'm like, no, we're not. We just had a motion to do the subcommittee. So I went back and watched it like ten times because I was like, what did we do? It was so jumbled. And it was like very fast and there was a lot of chatter. And I think I, I'm just telling you my perspective because at that time of night, I was like, whatever, let's just second this and move on because I was so tired. And I think that it was just not, I, I don't know. That was my feeling. I think I called Kelly and I was like, what happened at that motion? Like, what did we do? What were the implications? That I, I, I just, I, I think we should review it because I think it does have very strong implications of what we're doing now. But I think that motion in that time and moment was. I think it was very rushed and it was very confusing.
Totally.
No. I can say, you know, that um, from the staff's perspective, what we thought the motion was. You know, and like again, it's what the official motion is, and so, you know, I think that we will need to get um, an opinion on that. That being said, you know, tonight we do have a contract of Whitenburg before us to review. Um, and if we do not review that contract and put it off until the next meeting, we will delay the work that we're doing. Um, and there are some real serious consequences to that, and so. You know, I, you could still take this contract up. And I would suggest that you do, otherwise I don't, I'm not, I'm not clear on what you would like staff to do. And so I just, I want to make sure that, you know, at the very least, we do get that clarity, um. Because right now we're in a spot where this is really tricky. And there's something that really do need to be talked about. Um, we do have Stephanie Clark here um, to come into executive session with us to talk about this contract. So we brought this contract back to you because there is, um, I'm not going to get into the details, but. The way that it is structured, we wanted to make sure that you were completely aware of the work that was being done, and so we are. Wanting councils to take action and be transparent about it, um, but we need to have those discussions in executive session to make sure that we are clear. Because I guess that's just what I would like to say.
Adrian.
I am okay to go to executive session and discuss uh, this um, contract more. I just want to be sure that we are doing the right thing because of the discussion we did. Uh, at the beginning of the meaning, uh, meeting, so I don't want to come back next week and then people will say that, oh. We warned you, but you went to executive session anyway. So now we have to, just want to be sure that we are following the right steps, that's all.
Yeah, well, I just ask because maybe it'll help me when I reconstruct it, what the substantive difference is going to be. As far as specifically empowering this committee to work with Whitenburg as opposed to. I mean, were they disallowed? Was that, was it either or, you can work with Whitenburg or you can't? And I got the wrong one because I'm not sure substantively, if it leaves. If it leaves you all in many different place, but it would inform what I was.
I can tell you something that I felt, um. I, I thought I was just voting on that we are creating the subcommittee. I did not think we were voting on putting Whitenburg in it at all because there was no talk of an amendment and an acceptance of amendment. So I thought the original motion that Palin made just talked about creating the subcommittee. And that's why I got confused. I mean, we always said, well, I'd like to make an amendment and yes, I accept amendment. That, I did not see that done.
Jim, I'm wondering if I could, just out of curiosity, maybe this isn't the time, but like, when I said. Uh, but we're working with the subcommittee with Whitenburg and, and Jack said yes, and Palin continued, why not say something then? You know, and.
Because I didn't think that yours was, I think that you're, you were just throwing something out, but you didn't make it an amendment, so I thought I was just voting on Palin's thing. That's all.
The other thing I would just quickly say is that like, you know, I think we can consider the contract, right? And if people don't like the contract, they should vote no, right? But I think like, for the purposes of tonight, can we just go into executive session and discuss the contract?
Yeah, Kelly.
And so just I'm going to offer an alternative suggestion here, which is that regardless of the motion. What we do have in front of us is this contract and you can remedy that by going into executive session and reviewing the contract. And then authorizing or not, um, the city manager to execute that contract. And so I think that there is a elegant solution here for everybody and that we have a contract here before us tonight and we can review that contract.
We vote on it?
Well, what we vote on.
Because I don't remember voting being in the agenda. I just thought it was an executive session.
So.
We did not put, when we come out of the executive session, voting maybe, may take place.
Yeah, can I speak?
Yes.
Almost in every case, contracts like this are in the binder for everybody's review. I specifically made a request for this contract. It was told it's exempt. This is a highly unusual, this is improper, I would say, as, as far as our standard practice. But I'm just going to read you. I'm asking you to reject any further engagement of Whitenburg for Country Club Road unless and until. The city conducts its phase two public design process promised in twenty twenty three. The public was told that phase two would refine the conceptual illustrations into a real master plan. That promise built legitimacy, skipping it takes legitimacy away. This isn't about personalities, it's about ethics and the public interest. Rehiring the same consultant without an open competitive process while shifting design power. Away from citizens to developers creates the appearance of favoritism and undermines trust. Even if it's technically permissible, it fails the ethical test, fair process, transparency and meaningful participation. There is a straight, there's a straightforward path forward. Run a genuine time limited phase two. Publish how the input changes the plan and if professional services are needed, run an open procurement that rewards facilitation skill and conflict mitigation. If you insist on continuity with the same consultant, adopt guardrails, written sole source justification, clear scope limits, public disclosures, independent participation auditing. And third party review of any developer selection criteria. Montpelier deserves housing and resilience and we also deserve a process that respects us. Keep your promise of a phase two process, which was Whitenburg's recommendation. And the fact that they're willing to abandon it in favor of a secret contract that benefits them is wholly inappropriate. And for the city staff to be urging you to ram this thing through is wholly inappropriate as well. You, they should, they should not be driving the bus here. This is something we've been denied, something we were promised in the June twenty twenty three report, which was a phase two design process. That's been stolen from us through for expediency, and this is the ghost of Frazier's intent all along. And if we were ever to name anything over Frazier, it should be the district heat system.
I'd like you to avoid personal uh. Attacks on any individual, Kelly.
So for clarity, I just would like to offer that uh, council did take action in May um, to shift. Uh, the way we were going to review this process and put the development process in place. This does not mean that we will not do the other due diligences that are listed in the plan, um, but. Council did review and did take action and instructed staff to proceed.
I didn't understand the implications.
We found a subcommittee that looked at it, wrote a memo, this council approved it unanimously.
Correct.
The chair would appro, would entertain a motion to go into executive session. Pursuant to one VSA section thirty, three thirteen, one A. If someone would like to make that motion.
Don't move. Yeah, that's.
And, and I would, I would add to that to invite the city manager and Stephanie Clark and. With us.
Is there a second?
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. The yoga people are out of next door, um, so that girl, you can go.
We're paying steadily for.
I'm trying to find where our meeting is. We don't have Palin yet.
Oh.
Okay, everybody, we're back in business. Carrie?
Will you come out of executive session?
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, is there a motion?
And will we approve the contract with Whitenburg?
Is there a second?
Certainly.
Any discussion?
Yeah. I'd like y'all to explain why this contract was handled secretly instead of being in the packet as is typical practice for contracts for approval. Because this is, especially when there was information shared with councilors about other opportunities of why they should go to bid. There was no sole source justification presented. It's in violation of our procurement policy. And then you kept the, kept the contract from being, having the public's eyes on it until you're ready to vote. That's just looking really, really shady. And I'm surprised y'all aren't even discussing about the optics of it. But you, you really got a lot of people upset about this, you know, process. Thanks. And Will, I would like an answer as to why this wasn't publicly shared first.
Folks, is there any other discussion?
So who's answering the question?
Does anyone care to make a, we're not required to respond to the question.
So are we, is there an option to share the contract and then have a special meeting next week? To approve or not approve the contract? Is that something that you'd be interested in doing?
Where we are right now is, there's a motion and a second. And we're open for any, any discussion. All right, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Abstain.
Any opposed?
No.
So we have one, two, three aye votes. Mayor votes yes. Okay. Next item on the agenda is item 14, other business.
We, I added one item about the October 18th.
Yep, that's exactly what.
Thank you, yeah.
And do you want to talk, or I'll talk about it. It's been suggested, we, one of the public sessions for the city manager's review was scheduled for the 18th, which is the same day as, 18th at the Pavilion Auditorium, same day and within a few yards of the No Kings protest at the State House. And I don't think there's, it was suggested that it's going to be hard to get people to show up at, at our public meeting. People will physically have a hard time to get to it. And so we should come up with a, with another date for, for a public session. So I suggest the following Saturday. Because we want to have at least one of these opportunities be, an opportunity for in-person on the weekend as opposed to on evening. Is that, does that idea work for everybody?
Do we know that, that Dave will be okay with Ian? Because he will be there in person.
We'll check.
Maybe, yeah, maybe, maybe we can say that we will pick another date. But let's specifically say the date after talking.
Yeah, okay. So the 18th is off, the 18th is off and we'll come up with a new date. Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, thanks for bringing that up. That's, that was a good point. Council reports. Palin, starting at your end.
Our reports.
Ben?
Just, we had a housing committee meeting this week that Carrie Gemini attended. It seemed to go really well. We had nine members who were engaged, elected a chair, started a work plan. I thought it was a really positive meeting. And we committed to reporting out on what happens at the housing committee. So I've done that.
And to follow up on, on what you just said, Ben. I think it was before you got here, I was talking to Jim and the council had specifically said that
Yes.
the housing committee is going to be seven members.
Yes.
There are now nine people who are signed up to be on it. And so we're putting it on the agenda for our next meeting to expand it from seven to nine.
Great, thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome. So, Harry. Adrian.
I know it's late, I have two really quick things. So the economics subcommittee met, Kevin Chu came and presented. And so now we've committed to, I think it's me, Kalen and Sal are going to meet. And is that what we're doing? What are we doing? Sorry. I'm looking at you, I'm so tired, it's almost midnight.
Yeah, so the Economic Development Group Growth Subcommittee has community members supporting this initiative that city councilors taking the lead. And that group decided we have an outline for the report we will present to city council. So they suggested Adrian, Sal and I, plus David Kohan, one of the community members who created the outline. For us will come revise it, edit, then bring back to the, our subcommittee meeting. And we will talk about it publicly. So that's the.
Thank you.
And until we come up with the revised one, we are not having meetings because people are going with.
Thank you, totally, totally messed that up. And then on the 22nd, I'll be, I'll try to be on Zoom, but I'll be in Atlanta. So I'll do my best to, but not guaranteed.
Okay, thanks. Um, mayor's report, I just had two things. One was that today was the town fair, part of the annual meeting of the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. And, and Bill Fraser was given a lifetime achievement award for his many years of service to the, to the city of Montpelier and to the, the broader community for all of his, his work as city manager. And second, some of these deaths have been noted earlier, but at the, at City Hall, I received a copy of the, of His History Connections, which is the publication of the Vermont Historical Society. And in, in the summer 2025, History Connections, the Vermont Historical Society remembers three people with strong ties to Montpelier, who died in the past year. One was Barney Bloom, whom we all knew. The other was Michael Sherman, who also is a historian and very active member of our community. And the third is John Carnahan, who lived in Brattleboro, but was the father of Paul Carnahan, who was also deeply involved in documenting and studying and disseminating the history of the city of Montpelier. And so I think that's worthy of note. And that's all I've got. City clerk?
Oh, just to say, I should have trusted my original minutes. I'm sorry I got, when it was brought to me that I had screwed them up. Sorry, I, I guess I didn't screw them up because the, as I was saying, I just want to make sure people, because I don't think we were on yet here. Then Ben was completely right about that motion. It was, it was laid out pretty clearly. And then Palin said so moved, so Whitenburg was clear in motion. Just want to make that completely clear. The tape has been reviewed.
So those minutes will be on our next agenda.
Yeah.
Yep. And that's it?
Yep.
Any discussion about the election tonight? Upcoming?
I think it's important tonight. What am I doing? Uh, is there anything I can report about the election? Oh, just that I'm still looking for volunteers for it. If anyone's out there still listening and wants to volunteer, give me a holler. And I think I harassed you all too with an email that went out about signing up if you can.
Thanks. City managers, you think?
Just a very quickly, I know it's late, so sorry about this, just one thing. So I wanted to note that Kalen and I are working together on getting a process together for public service awards. And so we'll be bringing that back to you on the 12th of November, that meeting. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. And now we can adjourn at 11:57 PM. Thank you, everybody.